Hi, welcome everyone. A couple meetings in order at 6:40. We'll start by stating a pledge of allegiance. If you please join us.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with a public comment. Anyone who would like to make a public comment on any item that's not already on the agenda? We would ask you to step forward and state your name. If the item is on the agenda, we would ask you to hold your comments until we address that in the meeting. That was me. State your name.
Cindy Bevins.
Cindy, how are you?
My concern is the parking for the high school. I'm using the street. It's not bad yet. The school just started. Usually it takes a few weeks before the kids start picking up that I was parking there. You said you talked to the high school. Do you, do they have a plan?
No, the only conversation I had with the high school was made them aware of their problems. And the principal, Polly Rico, was going to mention that during assembly and other comments when possible. So she was trying to educate the student body about what the issues were.
Okay, so now we've had this issue for a while and that was supposed to be part of it. It gets where we get seven to nine cars on there for most of the day.
But you haven't lately.
Yeah, no, school's just started, so it starts slow.
Polly's comments may have carried some weight.
Okay.
I guess my comment would be let's continue to monitor it.
Well, that's kind of what I thought. You know, I hated to come down with them. Not bad yet, but I wanted to be ahead of the game.
No, I think Garrett has been tracking it down.
Yeah.
So we'll have Garrett, and you have a relationship with Garrett?
I've met him. I don't really know him.
But he'll continue to monitor it, and you've got my number.
Yeah.
So if you find, and I drive by, I try to drive by daily and see how it is as well. So if it does get bad, we will jump on it.
Okay, the other thing is the speeding on that road. When school gets out, they're all flying down the road. When work gets out, four o'clock or so, people use that as a cutoff to get over Lake Street faster. And they fly down the road, go around, they miss all the holes up at the traffic lights, so they don't have to sit there.
Cindy, I would say, join the club. We just had that conversation about the level of speeding, loud cars, whatnot. So it is an ongoing conversation.
Well, the ones that park there, the trash, they drop out of the cars and then deny it's theirs.
We had the same issue on Perry Street, yeah.
Do you?
We did. We stopped along parking between certain hours and that cut that out, but that was before I moved in there.
Yeah, okay. We have a few dump trucks using our road to deliver to Lower Weldon and Allen Street on that corner. But they were using our street going down there too. And I guess the only other issue that I have is to see if that dog is gone yet. Do we have proof?
We have proof the dog is not gone.
You have proof he's not?
We think the dog is still here and we'll restart the process.
Okay. Somebody did tell me that they're thinking he moved to a crack house in Burlington, but I don't know.
The dog or the owner?
Both. Both. I know the owner came and spoke to the one who leases it.
Well, if that's the case, you know, when they come forward, they can demonstrate that. But our objective will be to get a warrant so we can go get the dog.
Yeah, okay. I'd just kind of like to know when it's safe to walk there with dogs.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for coming in and stay in touch.
Okay.
Ed and Sarah, could you lower those two blinds by both of you? I'll help you out, Tim.
I was fine. Tim was worried about the lighting for the camera.
Thank you.
It doesn't make a difference, so thanks for that.
All right, we're going to move on to item number three. St. Almond's Creamery Appeal of Health Order.
Mr. Mayor, I had a public comment.
Well, get up here.
Well, I want to rush the issue.
Thank you. Mike, state your name and...
Mike Goldworth. I live on Bishop Street here in the city. And as the young lady ahead of me, I've got a parking concern as well. This past week, a sign just above Lincoln Avenue was moved. There was no parking from there to the Lincoln Avenue. And all of a sudden, it's halfway up the street, eliminating five parking spots on the right-hand side of Bishop Street as you go down. Now, we've got, well, if you're lucky, three in front of my house and a couple above that. So instead of having ten or twelve parking spots on Bishop Street, we now have half of what we've had. I've been there thirty-six years. All the neighbors on that street have been dealing with the same issue. They have a hard time backing out of the driveways because of cars parked there. But now it's exacerbated by the fact that we have less cars available to park. I had a lady come to my house and deliver a meal, my dad does, and ran into the telephone pole across the street when she backed out. Every time I try and go west on my, at least twice a week this happens, I go west down the street and I have to back up into my driveway because I've got people parked there and I can't see what's coming up the street. You know, we got, well, first of all, I want to know what the process was for moving a sign in the middle of the week. I don't know how that happened or if there was a due process or neighbors being notified because I didn't hear anything. None of the neighbors I've talked to knew about the sign. They just know that it was moved. I've monitored that every day. There's been cars every single day below the spot that says, "No parking from here to corner." And there's been no enforcement as far as people getting tickets. So I guess somebody wasted time putting the sign up because nobody's paying attention to it.
Is the sign on Bishop?
It's on Bishop, yeah. It's just one house below me. It used to be down towards the corner. Now it's backed up to the point where there's five or six cars or five or six parking spots that have been eliminated.
And that's between Lincoln Avenue and High Street?
Yes, yeah.
That's something we discussed.
I'm confused, Mike. I'm confused. Why has the elimination of five spots become an issue?
Because they're all parked in front of my house.
It consolidated where they were parking.
And we didn't have enough parking beginning with all the neighbors. If they have company, they park on that street. I mean, we have, I can, I'm not going to name neighbors, doesn't matter. But I've got neighbors. You see them when they have the holidays and different times, birthday parties and whatnot. And they park on the street because they have family or friends that come in. And they're parking all the way up and down the street. And that's just gotten worse because there is no more, there's been five or six spots that have been eliminated. I've been there a long time. I've seen it happen. The people lived across the street from me used to back into my driveway in order to leave their driveway because they couldn't back that way or this way. Most of the time, I have to go up the street because whoever's parked on the corner of my driveway, I can't get around them to go down the street. So it's an observation that...
Is this during the school year?
All the school kids are there too. However, it's, this is an end, this is throughout the whole year. The school kids, there's a few of them that park there from time to time.
Check it out, I don't know.
But that's not the biggest problem. The biggest problem is that eliminating those spots have created what was, I think, a minor problem that everybody lived with. Because, hey, you're in a neighborhood. It's a municipal situation. You know that when you buy a house on the street, you're going to have parking on the street. And hopefully you have parking off-street, which I am lucky enough to have. But now, what is on the street has been really reduced to the point where it's, yeah, I just don't want a parking lot in front of my house. That's the first problem, along with people trying to get in and out. And that's a problem. I can name it. Five neighbors I talked to in the last two or three days about that.
You live between High Street and Brown Avenue?
No, I live between High Street and Lincoln.
Okay. What side of the street?
North side.
The north side of the street, okay.
Yeah, and four houses on the left when you go up.
Do we, do you know why the sign moved?
Is there any chance it was moved at the request of one of your other neighbors?
I have no idea. I see, I don't know what the process is.
I don't remember discussing it, did we? And I forgot.
If there's a process, I'd be glad to follow it or talk about it with somebody.
Let me, let us look into it.
Yeah.
There's a standing ordinance, right? Fifty feet? Or what is it, from the corner?
Sometimes it's fifty, sometimes it's twenty. Signs also get moved when we get alerted to issues with parking. We're allowed to create a parking areas to avoid conflicts, but I'm looking to why this particular sign got moved.
Yeah, and again, I'm bringing up information. I don't expect results tonight. I'd like to have open dialogue if it'd be necessary.
Can you give us till noon tomorrow?
Two o'clock. No, really, I mean, it doesn't have to be fixed right. And the other thing, the biggest thing is, quite honestly, and it may be a mandatory issue, it's not being enforced. Even though it's even, even though it's new, there's been plenty of people there. The only person I think that should be parked down there is a mailman who's there for an hour or two during the day. Other than that, if it's no parking from here to corner, there should be no parking, period. I mean, you guys are, if you guys are making rules, I think they should be followed.
Yeah, we'll check it out.
Okay. Thank you for listening. And if you need some more information, give me a shout. I'm the house on Bishop Street with all the cars parked in front of me.
Good thing you have a long driveway. Don't stop up.
Sorry to cut you off, Mike.
No problem. I've got two minutes.
Any other public?
For my bike.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice, okay. Now we'll move on to item number three, St. Almond's Creamery Appeal of Health Order Notice. Pass those around. So we're going to, I guess relive this from last week. We'll have the conversation. So we'll start out with the city presentation of what the city views as the problem, followed by the follow-up of St. Almond's Creamery presentation, then public comment, and we'll go from there. So gentlemen, if you want to state your names.
Good evening. My name's Ed Adrian. I am an attorney based out of Burlington with Monahan Safar. He's also on the Burlington City Council for five years, so thank you for your service.
You're not still on the city council?
Oh, gosh, no.
Yep, that's smart on your part.
It's always nice to come to Vermont.
And introduce yourself.
I'm Dom McCloud, as you know, the city manager. And I'll just jump into it and run through some stuff and then do that cleanup, okay?
Okay, all right.
As the council's aware, the city issued a notice of intent to seek a health order in early August. That health order called on DFA to comply with the following requirements. I'm just going to state them in brief. But to stop the odor-producing operations, cease all operations contributing to the discharge of offensive, noxious or foul odor beyond the property boundary, less than until a mutually agreed upon environmental consultant certifies arriving if the odor has been mitigated, come up with an odor mitigation plan, permit site access for inspections, monitoring and review by the health officer, establish a complaint line, and then we reserve the right to do additional civil enforcement for non-compliance. That takes effect tonight. The council doesn't vacate or suspend. We're here after six or seven months of trying to work with, cooperatively with Co-op to try and find a solution. And we began working with them in January after city staff began complaining of the smell. Observed in City Hall, lived in the building, observed as we traveled around the city in our daily duties, observed at the Little League field in after-hours, and after we began to feel a flood of phone calls from the neighbors who live in and around the plant. Also enclosing your packet and distributing the Co-op our odor complaint tracking detail. And we see this isn't just one person. This is a pretty wide swath of folks in the affected area, really imploring us to take action and abate what was really affecting their quality of life. As you'll likely hear from some of the public comment tonight, people that live in the area don't feel like they can open the windows in the summertime. People drive by and say, you know, "What is that smell?" So that begins to affect obviously the identity and the brand of the community. And so we're here in the initial order asking the Co-op to get it under control, stop the stink. Not something. It's simple as questions.
Any questions of city manager? Ed, do you have anything you want to share?
I just want to make sure that the council is going to take the complaint list and make it part of the record, that spreadsheet that I think was part of the packet. And also, I just wanted, if Dom could just sort of go over how this began because Dairy Farmers for America, which used to be the Co-op, has been there for a long time, but this is a relatively recent event, so if we could just give them a little bit of a history, even though they may know it already, just for the record. Sure. Well, it wasn't too long ago that we celebrated the Co-op's hundred-year anniversary. And Co-op's had a long distinguished history in the city and a long relationship with the city. But about six months ago, something changed that we could detect. And what we learned in our conversations is that the Co-op was, I say the Co-op is shorthand, obviously, for the Creamery and Dairy Farmers of America, had had violations of their discharge permit and was under enforcement action by the Agency of Natural Resources. That enforcement action was covered in the newspaper, resulted in a six-figure fine and also a plan to install a pre-treatment device. And you can ask them about it when they're up here. But that pre-treatment device is the source of the stink. And that results in less discharge to the plant, a lower strength flow coming to the wastewater plant, but it kind of sets up a mini wastewater treatment plant in the heart of the city. And so it solved one problem, created another, and the city is experiencing the burden of that solution. Were you present during the DRB presentations last week? Yes. And there was at that time a number of city residents that came forward and described the smell as ranging from a dead body to vomit to very sulfuric. Was that your impression? And has that, have those types of smells been consistent? Yeah, I would characterize it that way as well. I mean, I would add septic, you know. That's what it smells like to me mostly. It smells like somebody's pumping out their septic plant every day.
Was the city allowed to participate in the remedial action?
No, no.
City get any notice of the remedial action?
We, you mean their pre-treatment facility?
Yeah.
Yeah, we reviewed it through the land development regulations as a building, but not as a, and there was no discussion in that permit of the smell. And I think, you know, they can speak to it, but I don't know that they anticipated the smell that they got. And so, but we weren't part of the proceeding with the Agency of Natural Resources.
Were we allowed to be?
I don't know. We didn't try to be, you know. It was, it wasn't something we were watching, you know. This is an interior, this is an internal process of a business. We only became involved when the smells began affecting the quality of life of everybody around there.
But you're talking two different things, right? You're talking the A and R situation.
Correct.
And our situation.
And what?
And our, the odor situation.
Well, one causes the other.
Right.
Yeah, you know, so we didn't participate as a stakeholder or an interested party in any way in the enforcement action. You know, I wasn't consulted. Perhaps other city staff were consulted. But there was no grand bargain between the city, the Co-op, and A and R on behalf of the lake.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So we've been talking about this for a while. Initially, we had kind of come to the conclusion that the smell was happening when the waste was being pumped out by Wind River. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that was the, like, main culprit when we were first discussing this a few months ago. And so at that time, we discussed, is there a way for Wind River to use a different pump? Because we were talking about how it was a certain type of pump and depending on the driver, they wouldn't necessarily know to use the correct one, and we discussed that. Does that, is that still accurate or is it at times when they're not pumping as well too?
It's my impression and my understanding and talking to others that it's not just when it's transferred into the truck. The solutions we came up with in that meeting roughly in April were to do install some scent boxes and to try to confine the odors more during the pump-out. But there's odors, odor complaints coming in that don't track right with when they were doing the pump-out.
Okay, so it's not just the disposal time anymore?
It's not just the disposal time, it's the treatment facility itself.
And we don't have an understanding of what is happening when we get these complaints, right? It seems to be a myriad of issues. It's not just one time or another?
I don't. Actually, you know, if you look at the data, the pattern reflects that it's throughout the day. You know, there's certainly some correlation with when they're doing some pump-outs. But it's also correlated with maintenance at the plant.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't run the plant. You know, the guy who does is a minimum. You can ask him. All I can tell is the date is not just when the truck is there.
So it's fair to say, though, that the people that work at DFA, that are processing the milk, obviously smell the odor because they did a lot to try to mitigate it. So it, the people that are working there obviously are smelling it. If they're working to mitigate the smell, you don't mitigate a smell that you don't smell.
Yeah, that's just, that's reasonable.
Okay, I'm just...
Any other questions? Everyone's good. Thanks, Ed. Thanks, Dom.
Thank you.
We'd like to invite up representatives from the Dairy Farmers of America. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If you can share your names.
My name's Peter Raymond, Attorney General Dean, here on behalf of DFA. And with me, Congressman Panos.
I was like a time, Dave, gentlemen, I was for the St. Almond's Creamery.
Thank you for coming in.
We also have, as in Schreier, who's a bad guy, sitting back there, but I'll have some questions for him. But for just space reasons. So initially, you know, there's a meeting last week, but I just want to give a little bit of introduction and let's, you know, give some explanation and address some of the issues that you just heard about, as well as Ed's been, can talk more to the engineering, thoughts on the path forward. So we've heard Mr. Cloud's explanation and testimony. And while the company and the Creamery, I should say, certainly disagrees with some of the characterization or, you know, some of the extreme description of these odors, this is not a dispute about whether there have been odors at the plant or not. Just want to make that clear from the get-go. But, and the Creamery takes seriously the concerns of the city and that in public. But the issue really that we see for you tonight is whether those odors are currently rising to the level of a public health hazard. And, you know, not so much a retrospective on what happened earlier this year. And it's on that particular issue that I think we disagree. And I believe is the evidence we have in the testimonial here is that the odor issue has been resolved. It's not currently a public health issue, and the Creamery is committed to taking further actions to monitor and to implement further technologies that will ensure it stays that way. But to understand where we're at, I think some context is necessary, as you heard and as Panos can explain more details, that we're seeing changes to the plant for the wastewater treatment that's going to reduce the high-strength wastewater going to the town's facility. But there's complexities with a system like that. There's uncertainties. There were odors. Odors were anticipated. But the particularities of what that odor profile was, how strong it would be, that those were difficult, difficult to sit in, an evolving process. And I think what is very clear is that the Creamery has taken the concern seriously. They, and as Panos will explain, that, you know, they get a complaint, they investigate, they try to identify a potential source, even if they couldn't line up for the reasons that were mentioned, you know, different time today, whatever it was, try to see if they could identify and if there was a solution, and implement that. That naturally is going to take time. So, you know, here we are. But what we believe the evidence shows as of now is that those solutions are working. The city's complaint law can really end at the end of July. Data that the company's taking its own observations, so the odor's been drastically reduced and eliminated in August going forward. But even so, the company's planning to, they've actually got a consultant coming up tomorrow to implement a monitoring plan, so they'll be monitoring, placed around the site. And they're also committed to further engineering technologies, a wet scrubber particularly for additional odor mitigation. So I think with those and with that plan going forward, we'd submit that, you know, there isn't a public health hazard. And, you know, the company's certainly committed to working with the city and continuing to address that. So with that, I'd like to ask Panos some questions on those points. So, Panos, can you just explain, you know, from a high level, what your role is in just because of the century?
So, as I mentioned, I'm the general manager. My job entails I'm responsible for the plant operation, quality section at the plant.
Now, back to the changes that were made. Can you explain what the upgrades to the plant's wastewater system in 2024 were for those?
So, yes, sir.
Can you also, when you do that, give us an estimate of the time when they were implemented?
The upgrades for?
Yeah, if you know all the copies you have.
Yep. So the Creamery went into development to modernize the site. Part of the modernization was not only processing, but also wastewater mitigation. As you heard, there was a conversation with the state on VF. We resolved that by implementing this new plant. Prior to that, we had three tanks that we were discharging to the city. Now we have one big tank that we're actually treating, taken by ourselves out and then discharged into the city sewer system. The implementation of that plan happened in November of 2024. In January, we heard concerns, it started okay, but in January, we had concerns about odor. We, I can give you a list of items that we did since then and when it happened by month. In January, when we heard that, we actually redirected our funds, and the fund is the irrigation system that we have in our building, in the tank. We sold off the highest-end tank in February to just make sure that... We sold off the high stand tank in February to just make sure that no orders, uh, or no, uh, air volume is actually dispersed out of that. Um, and March, we identified, uh, that were, uh, a blade that we used to, uh, agitate the, uh, biosolids was, um, deficient and they had actually broken off. So we emptied the tanks and changed them and building, uh, a welded system, which actually has been working since then very well. Uh, between April and May, we actually improved carbon filtration and we brought in basically our vendor for carbon. Uh, and they measured how much carbon we need, um, to address, um, the, uh, the big tank that we have.
Dennis, let me, let me just stop you for a second there. Because I, I, I wanna make sure that it's clear to the, to the city council. So some of those changes you mentioned, what were the, um, kind of the, the potential sources of odors, um, or, or did you identify? And how those fixes, uh, uh, address those issues? I just wanna make sure that's covered.
What, uh, what we, um, found out was that, uh, during the, uh, removal of the biosolids, there was, um, odor. Um, as it was mentioned also before, um, the, there were two main aspects of that. Uh, one was the air sparging, basically introducing air into the solids so that we can actually mix them better because the blades were not doing their work. Uh, and the other one was the tank, uh, is basically a septic tank that comes in general, uh, septic tank is nothing special. It will do the same thing, uh, on a house that it does to us where it's actually removed that waste. Uh, to remove it faster, they have an internal parking pump and it just basically sucks in the air and then throws out the air so we can actually fill the tank. Because of that, we, uh, and because of the complaints were happening at the same time, we identified that, we looked at it and we just basically introduced the gravity feed, um, process, um, that was implemented, um, in May. And at that moment, uh, the odor complaints that were coming in from that moment on, they were not aligning with the sludge removal. We also, uh, to the city's, uh, request, we changed the timing to be every morning, uh, rather than anytime we need to. And we stopped also decanting, um, to our, uh, equalization time.
And that's still happening, the early morning?
Yes. Um, also to, uh, um, to the question that was asked before about, you know, is that still happening that they were using gravity feed? Yes, we're still using the gravity feed process, which is for us, it's, it's very successful.
So, Dennis, okay. So just timeframe, those, those things that you just mentioned, can you again put us in, in a time context here? Is it, is that, is that kind of through April? Is that?
Yeah, that's through April, May.
And after those changes, you know, what, did, did the creamer receive, uh, additional complaints from the city?
We received complaints in May. We did not receive complaints in April. And we started investigating again on what we can do further. We, uh, we looked at our site and we also removed a tank that was there, um, that was used during the construction uh, of the new facility and that was used as a temporary, uh, storage tank. To do that, we had to clean that tank, um, and, uh, you know, address everything that was in there, uh, basically. We then, uh, introduced two, um, uh, two vendors, uh, one for, uh, for two different chemicals that we thought are gonna be, helpful to us. The, one of those, uh, vendors, the lead time was too long, so we decided to, uh, step back a little bit. We still have their proposal if we need to reengage them. The, uh, second one, uh, we actually were able to implement it in, um, uh, July. And, uh, we also are testing a third method in our building, uh, which is to actually, uh, produce a mist of essential oils basically into that room that the DAF is part of, uh, which is the top of the tank for the people who have seen, uh, the building from outside. So we installed, uh, a sodium permanganate, uh, in, uh, end of July and started treating our tank. And, um, for the whole month of August and continually doing that right now. And then also we changed our carbon filters again in September. Uh, we did try, uh, the sandboxes in, uh, somewhere in July, I believe. And, uh, what the sandboxes did, although started okay, then they blocked the filters, um, just because of, uh, pressure, uh, that were retaining. That pressure basically caused, uh, moisture to, uh, uh, be packed in there. Uh, that causes the filters to come, become, uh, a lump, not just pellets. And unfortunately, that basically destroys the filters, uh, and reduces their life. So because of that, we broke the filter out, took the sandboxes out, um, informed the city that, uh, we're not gonna be using them for this reason. And then we changed our carbon filtration at this point.
Dennis, let me ask you a little bit about the carbon filtration. And I'm not sure if you touched on it, but about the sizing, was carbon filtration initially contemplated as, as part of this system? And maybe how has that changed?
So, yes, initially, uh, during our application also to, uh, the development report, we did have a carbon filtration system. We actually had three carbon filtration systems. We believe that that would be adequate, um, for the size of operations that was there and the expected, um, compounds that we needed to actually, um, address. What we found out is that, um, when the, when we brought in our vendor, they just measured, uh, the volume of air that we were actually going through that. And they opted for a larger vessel to, uh, not only increase the absorbance of the compounds, but also increase the life size, uh, the lifetime of the compounds.
Mr. Gray, but apparently so is car- carbon filtration. You don't add carb into the tanks?
We do add. It's pellets. It's a big, yeah, on a, on a high level. Imagine a big tank that has pellets in it. Those pellets are carbon, the thing. And the air flows underneath. There's a little bit of a gap to, to allow air dispersion on the bottom of the tank. It basically blows in and then is forced up through the pellets. The pellets are activated through the moisture that is on the actual air and they control the compounds and then release, um, out to the air.
I believe you've touched on, you know, a, a number of changes, but kind of high level. I think the last one we mentioned was the sodium permanganate. And when would you say that all those changes kind of were fully implemented?
About August first, I would say, uh, all of those things that I mentioned, including the raise of the stack is implemented. And, um, we had, we had successfully, in our mind, uh, mitigated any issues or any constraints that the city may have. Um, we also started, um, measuring, um, our dis- discharge, from two sources. One is the main stack, which is actually the, uh, two thousand pound carbon vessel. And the other one is a stack, a barrel that is actually used for the sludge, uh, tanks. The air from those last tanks is getting vacuumed in through the carbon and passes through the filter and then out to the air, to the environment. So what we found out is that, um, for the month of August and up to, um, September fifth, our discharge from the carbon, um, big filter was, uh, non-detectable for H two S, which is the compound that, um, we were told creates, um, the orders from, uh, the sludge tank, um, carbon system. We had two days at the start, uh, where we actually had higher than one part per million.
Dennis, let me stop you for a second. I think it'll be useful for the council. So let me ask a background question. You, you did some testing and you created a chart based on the, the results. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what you have before you is that a summary of, of the results for August?
Yep, summary of the results for August and first five days of September.
Oh, and the, the bottom, sorry, the headline, yeah, that's just a summary of the timelines.
We just, yeah, exactly. Do you want to explain the, the columns?
Oh, no, no, why, why don't you go ahead? Now that they've got them in front of them, I think it'll make more sense. So why don't you just go ahead and explain the, the columns and the values?
So obviously the date, uh, this is the time, the next column is the time that we took. And as you see, the times are variable to actually capture, um, different stages during our operation. The, uh, first column is a pre filtration tank. That's the big tank that is actually, um, is the main area where we equalize our wastewater. That tank feeds into the carbon discharge, which is a two thousand pound main, uh, filter. Um, and that the two numbers show the difference between what is prior to the carbon and what is after the carbon. The next three, uh, columns are also, uh, related in the sense that we have two sludge tanks that we are, we're, um, collecting biosolids. And those are the numbers from both of them. And, um, the, uh, last column is basically the discharge on hydrogen sulfide compounds after the filtration. As you can see, the main tank in our mind works very well. The, uh, sludge carbon discharge, we had two days that were above one part per million. And the rest of them were below, non-detectable or below one part per million. Um, I do want to make sure that, um, I state that, that this is at the point of discharge. It's not at the end of our property line or beyond that.
Did I hear at some point you talked about scrubbers?
Yes, um, the company continues to try to find new, uh, new methods, new systems, new operations to become more efficient, more modern. Uh, we want to be ahead of, of changes, uh, that may happen in the future. So the, uh, the company has decided to move ahead with, uh, carbon, sorry, another carbon, um, a wet scrubber, uh, installation. And we have started the, uh, process for that.
So, can I ask a question?
Are you, you guys said?
I, we got a little bit more, but go ahead. Yeah.
So because of all of these actions taken, it seems like you have an idea of where the smell is coming from, right? Like you can sort of, if you've eliminated this many things, that this isn't the cause of it, can you, can you predict to some extent when the public is going to be impacted?
I, I think failure of the system, obviously mechanical failure could be one. I believe, you know, uh, we still have to implement a couple of things that we're still looking at, uh, including a cleaning regimen, uh, that we feel, uh, needs to happen more automatically. And maybe that will also help us, uh, with those, um, if, if that is the case. But we believe strongly that we first need data to, to understand it. The, uh, the person who is coming tomorrow, uh, who is going to create first a study of, um, uh, where to put the meters and then put meters and then start looking at that, uh, will give us a better idea. At this point, it's a speculation, to be honest. Uh, for me and for, for my team, we feel that these items have controlled what, um, as regard to the health regulation, have controlled, um, the issue at hand.
Dennis, let me, let me ask you this because I think the question might have been based on the changes in the data or the, the companies got. Have you been able to pinpoint a, a source of, a continuing source of odors or is that, is that, is, if there are odors, is that, is it kind of unknown?
The only one I can say with confidence is the discharge, uh, of the pump during septic removal.
Okay.
That's the only one I can say with confidence. I, you know, this is a brand new system. It's a complicated system. Orders are, are extremely difficult to pinpoint, uh, in certain situations. So we want to, before I say something, I want to have a little bit more background and data on, on what is going on, um, especially beyond our borders, um, appropriately.
And to that end, is that what the, the monitoring, what?
Yeah, we want, we want to make sure that, you know, right now we know, okay, so there is zero discharge in our, um, in our main stack. Is there other orders, other areas? Okay, if there are, where are they, to your point? It should pick it up. Uh, that's what they're designed for. So, and we want to make sure that this is not obviously a health concern, um, for our neighbors and for the city.
Based on the, the data that that monitoring reveals that it shows that there's additional sources of odors, do you understand that the, what, what the creamery will do about that?
Uh, we'll just go on the rest of them. As we have, uh, for the last six months, uh, we find something. And that's, that's the, the culture of continuous improvement. We, we, uh, we have enforced that into our, um, daily activity. Um, and basically we find the problem, first identify, what is the issue, then continue with the solution. Test the solution. If the solution is not, um, addressing the issue, then re-engineer the whole process again. And then keep on working in that cycle. So identify, test, adjust, identify again, test and adjust until, um, we hope that, uh, we will not have any issues, uh, going forward.
Any other questions or comments?
So at, at this point, Dennis, two questions. Was, in addition to kind of the monitoring, have, have there also been, have personal observations of, of the plant employees? Has that been part of the, the routine?
We do, we do take regular walks outside the plant and obviously inside the plant, that's daily activity. So, uh, we do want to make sure that our, um, I would have a kind of, uh, understanding of what's going on. Uh, the walks happen throughout the day, different times. I do some personal, there's other employees that have been tasked with that also to, um, walk around, identify if there is anything that is emanating from the plant. And if they do, immediately raise it to, uh, the management. And, um, we have, uh, on occasion, we have smelled close to the tank, as in within five feet of the tank, we've smelled something, but that does not go beyond our borders.
Anything good?
I would, I think I would like to have, um, and Dennis, unless there's anything else, you, you, you'd like to add at this point?
If you have, yeah, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
It, it may be useful for, for engine, the, the plant engineer to kind of describe a, a little bit about, um, you know, kind of the, the engineering, you know, the white scrubber, um, and is he, is he involved in the, the design phase to the, to the extent that the city council has?
I personally am fine with what panels have shared. If any of the other council wants to.
I don't know how that would help us in any way, right now.
I think we're comfortable with what's been shared with, with panel's, uh, information. Unless there's anyone here?
I think the only other question I have is it keeps getting said that you're addressing all the internal systems before against taking out a building either through our disposal or through the trucking companies. Now, most, most companies have to work with their vendors to make sure the vendors are meeting the needs of their building as well as community around them. What is being addressed as far as that process goes? Us, us, the company working with you guys, follow any rules that would help mitigate any smells during that process?
Yeah, so, um, I'm assuming you're, you're referring to the, uh, biosolids removal. Yeah, uh, at the start, uh, we had, um, various success because some operators would like to use the pump because it pumped in fifteen minutes versus waiting a little bit longer. It is not that longer, that much longer, to be honest. We, uh, addressed it by calling their management. I, I personally made the phone call to their, um, um, their fiscal manager and told them that they need to adhere to those regulations. We addressed it by telling our facility, uh, employees who, uh, we now have a dedicated personnel for that job. And all the other employees that are, um, that are, that are part of that department, that they, at no point they are allowed to discharge to the tank. If the vendor starts using their pump, they're supposed to shut down our, our, um, process. And I also stood there with, um, And I also stood there with every truck that came for a week, so I'll make sure I get all everybody. And just basically stood there and just talked to them about why we're doing this, what is the issue. There are, we did talk with, with Wind River also about the possibility of having what they call a clean truck, which is basically the same truck, but they have an addition of a, of a filter, a carbon filter like ours. That will require a different, a different way of discharging, meaning that they can come at nine o'clock or eight o'clock or anything like that, they just use them differently. We felt that we would go to that if this did not work. Luckily, they agreed to that, they implemented that, there is no pumping that's happening during the discharge. So we don't see the issue, we consider the issue resolved. And we want to basically just not go to that solution because it helps everybody to stay where we are doing. And again, we don't see an issue at this moment with any of the Wind River trucks or our employees. They are very well aware that they cannot use the truck pump.
Before we go too far, a couple of things. Chip, if you want to just add these to the minutes, the readings. Ed, you wanted the odor complaint detail list added to the minutes as well?
Yes, please.
And then I have two emails that were sent in today, one from Joanne Kye, one from David Horn, unable to be here tonight, but had shared their comments relative to past odor, so keep passing those over. Panels, I guess my last question for you is what's your ask?
Yeah, I, I think the, the ask is, you know, what we've proposed, or I think what panels have demonstrated is that we believe that we've resolved the odors, you know, without getting into a debate about whether they ever rose to a public health advocate, but as of today, we've certainly taken significant measures and investment. But furthermore, the company is committed to doing this monitoring. It's going to take some time, you know, they're coming out, they're going to develop a plan. And I think I think they can probably speak more to the timeline. But with that result, to the extent that there's additional odors that are shown, that, you know, they've committed to a wet scrubber, so I think the ask would be either to deem the, this issue resolved, so there's no need for a public health order, or if the city council would like to stay this and we'll, we'll see what the, the monitoring reveals and we can talk, you know, keep talking to the city about if, if there's anything that we need to address and how we're going to do it.
One last question, would you be open to city staff joining you during the monitoring discussions?
Absolutely.
They, they could join you?
Yep.
I just, I understand you are questioning whether this, the smells raised to a level of like a health issue. I think though, when we look back, it's also comforting quality of life for people that live down there. So I think that for me, it's not only around health, but it's also around like, can you go and have a barbecue in your backyard and, you know, feel comfortable and not have a smell? Dom, have there been any complaints since the end of July? And if, and when did this become public that we were working with DFA to mitigate the situation? That was a question.
Yeah, I mean, the best testimony was from Councilor Hunt in mid-August, in her experience driving along Federal Street.
So the fact that there were no complaints on this log in August doesn't mean there haven't been complaints, just not logged?
I think the Creamery's done a nice job of showing how much they've invested and how serious they are, and the city acknowledges that. Most of what they're demonstrating is inputs. And I think we need some more time to evaluate whether it's working. You know, I suggest the council consider maybe a continuance for 30 days to the October meeting and see where things are at. I think things are a lot better in August, but they're not all better. And there were a whole bunch of people at the zoning hearing the other night with experiences from August.
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts, like I usually do. So I did come to the DRB meeting the other night, which was really informative. And I think a lot of kind of what we're talking about would benefit from some of those, like hearing some of those conversations. And quite a few people on Bethel Court were really frustrated about not being able to go outside. And I live, I've said this a few times, I live very close to the co-op. And I, for the longest time, said, I've never smelled anything, I don't know what's going on, whatever. And then recently did, probably oh, two weeks ago. And it's, I think it's a little bit hard for us because in the same sense that the co-op is a connection between the farmers that we are, that are so important to our community, that it's like you guys are kind of the middle person between the farmers and the consumers. We, as a council, have been hearing for the last, I mean, it's August, it started in what, dawn of January? We've been hearing from really angry constituents. And we've been saying, we're working with them, we're working with them. But when it's been this long, it's hard for us to keep saying, stuff is happening, stuff is happening, when their life, their lives and their experiences are not reflecting what we're telling them. So I think that's the hard part, is like, we can look at these numbers and we can look at the highlighted part and say, yes, things have been happening. But I also think, and this is just like, I don't know if this is accurate, but I think that after 10 months of working on improvements, there has to be a time where you have an idea that something you're about to do is going to cause some sort of odor. And if there could be a little bit more information about, like some public notice. A few people said that it lasted for three days at a time. And I know that that was a few months ago, and that's probably been alleviated. But if you know that it's when you're pumping, it's when, which apparently it's not, or it's when you're cleaning a tank, if maybe it would be helpful to tell the city. And it just feels like, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but it feels like we were communicating really well in the beginning and that wasn't happening after a while. And so we know on paper that things have been improving, but we're hearing from constituents that it's not. So I think we're just trying to figure out how to improve the lives of those employ, those constituents. And also, when we have business owners saying that their businesses are suffering because people can't buy, aren't buying houses in that area because they go to a showing and it smells terrible. So I think that's, that's where I'm coming from personally.
People can't eat outside.
Yeah.
You know, we have restaurants, you know, where we're getting complaints, that have outdoor seating, you know. I mean, that's, it looks like to me you guys have put in a big investment. I think, you know, I think maybe a little bit of time to see how these investments, how these fixes have been working is appropriate. But I think, I think the frustration how we got here is because staff tried to work with you first, and then we had a meeting with city council months ago, and now we're all the way here. And it's taken a lot of resources of our city to deal with this issue. I'd be a proponent of giving it more time. Maybe we don't have to go through this meeting, but I would like, maybe if some of you guys could get it from the chief engineer of what they plan on doing in the next month, two months, the timeframe, maybe send it out an email so we could see that. And then we can make sure that those things are happening when they're supposed to happen. But it's definitely not fixed yet. I mean, that's, that's my position.
Are you ready? Can I make a motion?
Okay, gents, thank you, thank you. We were going to take public comment and then we'll have a discussion. If anyone in the audience who would like to comment to this, we would ask to keep your comments for two minutes. Come on up and state your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Denise Allen, I'm a resident on Bethel Court, which is one street right behind Federal Street. I'm sure you guys are aware. And I've been working with Marty for quite some time with regard to the odors that have been coming through. Again, as Dominic had said, since January. I was here at the meeting last week and I was asked to, you know, voice this information to all of you here tonight, that I'm an avid dog walker, I'm constantly through the streets of St. Albans. And I did notice the, the odors starting in January of last year up on Main Street, nonetheless, not even in my yard. And having windows shut for the majority of the winter, it wasn't such an issue until May rolled around. And Dominic, not Dominic, but Marty and I had been emailing back and forth as I was inquiring and inquiring. And he, you know, the comment, much to your point, was we're working with the DFA to mitigate this information. And the odors were clearly that, for me, of sewer and just something composting, decomposing. It was very offensive. Now, I've been here for four years, and I purchased the home for my daughter, who lived here three to four years before that. And the co-op's been here for much longer than that. And it's a recent issue now, up and through July, we've, I've had to close my windows over the Fourth of July weekend when my daughter came back home. And she's like, what in the world is that odor? And I was like, don't even get me started. So, yes, frustrating season this year when, you know, you wait so long to open up your windows and have people over and host, and you can't do that because of what's going on, you know, one block over. I will say that there was no question where the odors were coming from as I was out walking because, you know, taking a right and walking down past a creamy, literally I'd have to pull my shirt up over my face just to walk past her because it was that offensive. So there was no question where the odors were coming from. With that said, I have not had any issues in the last six to eight weeks, end of August or so, middle of August. I've not detected anything, I haven't had the need to reach out and inquire, especially now knowing that this is going on. So whatever is the most current resolution, at least for me, seems to be working. If that changes, I know where to find you. So, that helps or not?
Thank you for your time.
Nice.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Alyssa. I live with my fiance, we over at Ten Cherry Tree Court, so just a little bit up the ways from the dairy plant. And I, I can attest that probably about two weeks ago, I definitely, you know, I was in my little bubble of my vehicle coming home from work. And as soon as I opened my door to get the mail, I'm just, you know, hit in the face with that very awful odor, smelling propane or sewage. I've been living here in St. Albans for about two years, last summer, no problems whatsoever. But this summer has just been pretty awful. I like to take frequent walks throughout the town and it, it kind of feels discouraging to be able to enjoy my own city when it smells so bad. I know I've definitely noticed from as soon as I enter or exit my front door to walking down and passing the plant that as I get closer, it's just, the smell just grows worse. So I just wanted to bring up that testimony because I attended the meeting last week and was encouraged to see again. So I wanted to just talk to that.
Have you noticed any improvements?
I haven't been, I've kind of been running around, I've been funding planning processes. So I haven't really had a chance to go outside and smell anything. But I'll certainly take note, I know that this weekend I've got plans to just enjoy the outside, so that's fun.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? Seeing, seeing none. Anyone on Zoom like to share comments? Chip, nothing?
Not seeing the face answer, anyone unmuted?
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I make a motion to extend the notice of intent to seek a health order for an additional 30 days to give us a little more time to collect some of that data.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll load the paper, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. So, panels, you have 30 days. I would encourage you to continue to work with Marty and Matt as you coordinate new efforts so that we have a feel for, and to Chad's point, sharing an email with Dom that he can share with us as, as you move forward. We want to work with you. So we'll continue to monitor that. If you've got any questions, you can contact Dom anytime this week, and we'll move forward with that. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we'll move on to item number four, which is the Belonging Equity Equity and Inclusion Committee update. Thank you all. Hello, how are you?
Hello.
You want to all share your names and your, what role you play on the BEI committee?
Hi, my name is Maureen Jamison-Brooks, and I am the co-chair of the Belonging Equity and Inclusion Committee.
And I'm Carl Watkins, I'm going to let her read.
Okay.
Hi, do you want to join me up here?
Yes, I am Connor Holt-Camp, I'm the leader of the BEI committee.
Thank you.
All right, and we are here to give some updates. I lost the thing, it's okay, I know what we're talking about. So we're here to share some updates about what the BEI committee has been working on for over a year now. We're also hoping to be in more regular contact for some of these meetings, hopefully quarterly. And we want to talk about the city's inclusion statement, which was issued, I believe, three years ago, it might have been 2022. Connor, do you want to, do you want to talk about our initiatives that we spoke of last meeting?
Yes, I believe I was going to be covering the upcoming spooky Saturday activities that we are going to be participating in. Our alternate member of the, of the committee and I will be doing face painting near the fountain at the time of the witches' dance. So hopefully that will be fun, enjoyable experience for everyone, a few little zombie themed stuff. One of the other things that we'll be doing is reintroducing a sort of meet and greet with the committee, looking at doing that at a sort of quarterly pace. Just a sort of sewer space to meet up with mocktails, snacks, and just direct communication with committee members so we can address and float information to the council as appropriate. I'm sorry.
Since Carl and I have joined the BEI committee as co-chairs, we have expanded our Movies That Matter initiative, which has been overseen by pastor past, pastor Preston Fuller, which is right at the weld-in, we typically try to do every other month a Movies That Matter situation. And we've partnered with lots of nonprofits locally and causes that are near and dear to our community. Recently, one that comes to mind is Recovery City. And we had a panel of folks speaking about substance use and recovery here in St. Albans. Next month, Voices Against Violence will be showing a film from Movies That Matter centering on domestic violence, along with a panel from the Voices staff.
I guess I'll read the inclusion statement now. The city of St. Albans condemns racism and welcomes people of all ages, citizenships, colors, disabilities, gender identities or expressions, national origins, races, religions, including non-religious, sexes, sexual orientations, sizes, and other classifications. We want everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a community, we formally condemn all discrimination in all of its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all and will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. We further commit to doing a better job of tackling our own biases, uh, both implicit and explicit, and trying to elevate voices and people who have not traditionally been heard or valued. We recognize that these discussions will be hard and will expose many of our own presences. Our goal is to excise these from the city, both as individuals and as a municipality. The city of St. Albans will continue to strive to be a place where individuals can live and freely feel like they have the opportunity to be valued and beloved. Uh, since then, our committee has expanded its work by articulating goals and values that carry the Declaration's spirit forward while shaping our ongoing efforts. We would also like to formally request permission to utilize the Declaration of Inclusion for public posting and communication when appropriate, uh, so that it can serve as a visible reminder of the city's commitment. Oh, that was a, a request. Sorry, I can't read through that. But yeah, we just like to use it, um, uh, we do postings, we recently, um, posted the.
Fair and impartial policing.
Thank you. Um, and we were able to post that, there were, there were questions from the community about what our stance was. And we already have a lot of documentation that, that lays out what our stance is, so we thought that was valuable and it appeased some of the questions that were brought to us.
It's very helpful to have statements that are agreed upon by city council and the BEI committee, such as the Fair and Impartial Policing Act, which was worked on by the Police Advisory Board. Um, so that if constituents come to us wanting to talk about certain issues in the community that we have, an agreed upon statement that feels appropriate to share with the community in response. Um, we feel like we would be on really good common ground together, just if we have permission to share this statement widely as we have in the past.
How would you share that statement widely?
Most of our communications with people come either on social media. We post things, um, such as community events or responses to common conversations that we're having. Um, or directly with our constituents during committee meetings if there's public comment.
And so are you talking about some type of, um, statement on the city website, for instance?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, um, or even if it's posted directly on the city website underneath the BEI committee's little subsection.
We do have, there is a, a, already a link in our documents for the Declaration of Inclusion. Um, but there may be a time where, um, where we do want the text to be a little bit more visible as opposed to a click link.
How would you do that?
That would be through the, the Facebook posting or possibly like, like stated on the BEI, uh, on our page, but as the full text as well.
So that people don't have to dig for it, it'll just be part of what's under the BEI page.
And you have the banner too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Would that change?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, we're, we're asking for no changes. Um, just looking forward to some of our goals and, and what we'd like to do as far as addressing some of the things that have been brought up.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Connor.
Connor?
Yeah.
Uh, can you explain that activity that was gonna be by the fountain?
Oh, the face painting?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we're going to be, uh, it's part of Spooky Saturday. It is, uh, for purposes of just good fun, heavenly enjoyment, uh, the co-chair, not the co-chair, I apologize. The, uh, alternate and I will be, um, intend to do, uh, a little zombie makeup. So, you know, fun, kid-friendly stuff appropriate for the holiday, nothing, nothing evil dead.
Just a way to engage with the community in a positive way?
So how would you, how would you get that information out? I mean, how do, how do I know that that's going on Saturday at ten o'clock? How do I tell that?
It's a citywide event that's being published already.
Okay.
It's a, it's from the downtown.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's downtown.
He doesn't go.
You should book him a time.
There will be a few vendors and stations and activities throughout the park.
Okay.
And we've already secured our spot, um, through Arly to have our own table.
Yep.
Um, and how are, are you promoting like the Movies That Matter? I haven't been able to catch one of those yet, but I hear they're very well attended.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah, we do mostly communicate at like French, front porch forum and social media. Um, and then for certain activities like Recovery City, um, I work at Voices Against Violence. So a lot of the time we communicate with other nonprofits in the area and we can push out Movies That Matter to say, this might be something that we're interested in, in our line of work.
And a lot of time our panelists also, you know, are advertising for us as it's a subject matter that's near and dear to them.
On your, uh, page, can you, can you, um, share what your attendance is? Not now, but moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it'd be interesting for people to know that, two things, whether it's a full, full theater or an empty theater. I mean, I think people would like to know what your activities are and what the impacts are.
That's a great idea.
If you can do that, that would be helpful.
I like, uh, I like these committee updates. I think this is like the first one that we've seen, so that's cool that you guys came in and kind of gave us an update, what's going on?
Thank you. Um, moving forward, we would also like to request dedicated time on the city council agenda. Whether you choose to do this monthly or quarterly with us, um, we think we should do quarterly. And we also want to ask for your guidance, how can we best support you and your constituents? Are there ways our committee can serve as a resource to you?
Let me address the meeting time. Monthly won't happen.
Today's a bad day to ask for that.
We're on number four of twenty?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's, um, it's a, it's an ongoing discussion, right? So there are mon, there are months when we're done and an hour, and we know what that agenda is and if we can react short notice. But, um, for us, you know, we do meet monthly and the agendas do get lengthy. So we would just, I'd be open, for me personally, I'm not speaking for the council, but more semi-annually. Um, because we do have, um, we have ten committees, I think, for the.
About that.
About that. So if we had ten committees coming in regularly, like monthly or quarterly, um, a lot of, I think a lot of our other stuff. And I'm, I don't need to downplay the importance, but I think we have, as you saw tonight, there's, there could be many things that, uh, fill the agenda, um, that we need to address at the same time. So, um, I'd say we continue that conversation through Chip.
And, um, and just check in and say, you know, can we come this month? And Chip, okay, well, the agenda's lengthier, yeah, this month would be good, so.
Especially when you have an event coming up.
Yeah.
Like a big event, you know?
When you do have, like you mentioned, a meet and greet, can you, is there a way that you can invite? Like, I would like to just like get an email about that, I'm not always on social media or don't always check the front page forum, but like something like that where I could go and meet the other folks on the committee.
Yeah, one of the.
And have a way to check in with them, because we interviewed a lot of you, so it would be nice to check in again once you've been, you know, boots on the ground for a bit.
We can definitely have either Carl or myself, um, just send an email to everybody if we have something big like that coming up, which I imagine will be twice a year, um, at the most.
I think larger value would be maybe the weekly report too, for any of the committees that are doing something special if that's just, went into like a drop-in.
Yeah, I, we put that in the report when the committees are about to meet or when they have a matter, when they have an event coming up.
Too, yeah.
We put in the Movies That Matter.
I missed that one.
Do you have any vacancies on the committee?
No, we just filled it.
Yeah, Connor, and we have an alternate, that's also awesome. Good thing you're friends.
I did look on, I did look on the site and they, they, we do have the Declaration, the third item down, but we should have the text version of it, the digital text version, because it's not searchable, because it's a scanned version that we had stamped and signed or whatever.
Uh, to make it look official.
Well, then, when you search Google, you can quickly find.
Right, yeah, understood.
And because that is something that was adopted by the council, do, do we need to give permission for groups to use it? Or is that like something that's not even necessary? Chip, I'm asking you or?
Chip and I warned this, the committee asked if they, if we could read just the cards, put the cards on the table. The committee wanted us to trumpet it and give it more emphasis. And lots happened in the world since that was adopted. And before we reissued that, we wanted to have this conversation.
We, you know, part of, you know, belonging equity and inclusion is introducing information in a way that is not abrasive to anyone. Um, so that's truly our goal, is to make sure that we have these conversations to see how it affects our.
So to the extent that the council is okay with it, you, you know, we can work with the committee on that request, not having any objection. It wasn't, we don't need to re-adopt it, but it wasn't, you know, considered by this council.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tim will be at Spooky Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we allow the use and emphasis in promoting of the.
Uh, is it up for?
I think we've got what we need or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just the last ad, um, if, you know, we, we wanna support you, you know, this has been a goal of ours is to have this open dialogue on a more regular basis. And there's things that we needed to take care of, you know, within the committee to get to where we are. Um, so if you think of any way that we can support or any other activities that we could take on or, or issues that could be brought to us, we'd like you to think about it and, and just let us know how we can support your constituents.
Just continue bringing people together, preferably in the parks. For positive, positive events in the park, we love.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You as well.
We're gonna move on to item number five, which is the first reading of an ordinance to make Bellow Street one-way during school drop-off and pickup. Chip, I'll turn that over to you and.
Thank you very much, um, described the situation in the memo, but we have, um, a proposal here to just help us navigate what's become a traffic conflict mostly for about an hour in the afternoons. On weekdays, when St. Albans City School is dismissed. And it's, it's, uh, there are a lot of parents who park to wait for their kids to be dismissed. And thus, Bellow Street effectively becomes a one-way street as other traffic tries to get into the school. And so this first reading is basically to propose that Bellow Street becomes one-way westerly during that hour or so. Um, just so everyone's going in the same direction on the street for that time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm a teacher, I know what pickups like at my school.
Yeah.
If it's.
You are a teacher?
Oh, yeah. Are parents lined up side by side or is it single traffic?
What you end up having is that, uh, Ferris Streets, Ferris Streets not widen up for three lanes of traffic, it's a two-lane.
Neither is, neither is Ferris.
High school only.
I get Ferris Street.
We don't need one-way around.
The, so many parents come to wait for the kids to be dismissed that the parents parked waiting start to back up past the school grounds along Bellow Street. Now, there's also a lot of reasons for traffic to be driving onto the school grounds at that time. So that traffic now drives around the parked cars and they're basically going west even though they're in the eastbound lane of Bellow Street, right? And then you get conflicts with some of the people who live on that street who wanna go east, but they can't because all the traffic's going west.
Through traffic.
Through traffic, yeah. So the through traffic basically shifts over to be using the entire street. And we think the easiest solution here is, um, and a lot's gone into how City School designs their pickup and dismissal, right? They, they have limited space and they have a lot of parents and so does State Tech who come for drop-off and dismissal. So we think the best solution is for all of the traffic to go in the same direction.
Is there any reason we can't put the, no passing zone at the beginning of that road and park a cop down for a few weeks?
Yeah, we don't have the police.
Just for the hour.
I mean, town school hired someone to do that, we don't, we're not advocating for more. School, school staff.
What about a better utilization of Calvary Street?
I can't speak for the school, but my understanding is that Cavalry Street's used for the buses.
Okay.
And they use, they like, they stack that whole cul-de-sac of buses, they have to come in on Cavalry and they have to leave on Calvary. I forget which version of the word it is.
But what about that, that strip between Bellows and Calvary? That.
That gets pretty well stacked up with, um, a lot of school, uh, parking and, uh, custodial use and administrative, and having a lot to do with the daycare and the entrance to the big gym. So there's not a lot of room there as well on that, on that little drive.
So I know they have a crossing guard in the center there. Would it be possible to put somebody at that area where you go past that last house? And then you take a right and you go around the back of the parking lot? Would it be possible to have someone sort of direct traffic into that area, uh, if they're?
Do you want to invite the school up to take some of those questions? I think they're more school-related though. Hey, Craig, you're gonna get a chance. Marie, were you talking about going up this way?
Yeah.
Good evening, folks.
I don't fall out of the chair.
Will you share, share your names for the record?
Um, yes, I'm Stephanie Gannon, I'm the principal of City School.
Okay, well, Superintendent May Goran, thanks for having us tonight.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, no, this is a common situation in most schools, not just in people. Um, I see it, I see it on my, if I don't, yeah, I see it at all schools that I travel by. I travel farther by eight to ten schools on my way here and the way home. And there's a, usually as Trudy was saying, there's a backup at every school site I see of about fifteen to twenty minutes either way. And so Dr. Gannon's here to talk to you about what we do at City School.
Yeah, so, um, our buses, we have ten buses, they load from the back on Calvary Street in a staggered diagonal. Um, and then, um, they come in, come around the cul-de-sac, park, and then leave out that way. Um, our total student population is around six hundred students and then we have a hundred and fifty-eight faculty and staff. In the mornings, arrival time is at seven-thirty, um, and that's for students and staff. We do have a significant portion of our student body that are car riders at some point during the day. We do have a few walkers, um, as well, but most of our population either rides the bus or they come in through their car. Um, and so, uh, Bellow Street, they come in, um, through Bellow Street. Uh, we've worked really hard with the DLO over the last, uh, year and a half, starting last year, of how we could better, um, not block traffic, um, get it, not have it back up, um, for our students and do so safely. Uh, we have kids as young as three and kids as old as fourteen, fifteen. Um, so, uh, in the morning, everyone drops off in that front lane. Drop-off, we've moved the line all the way down to the pavilion on Bellows, which has significantly helped this year with how long, um, traffic gets standing still, um, on Bellow Street. Um, we are usually, uh, parents start rolling up about seven-twenty to drop students off. And then we are usually clear by seven-forty. Um, traffic is, um, some improvements we've made this year at the suggestion of, um, the DLO have significantly helped that aspect. We do ask parents to park for those that are letting kids out with car seats. I imagine a three-year-old is not gonna be a quick drop-off. Um, in the morning, little legs, little hands, lots of backpacks. Um, so our front row of parking is for parents that either need to walk their students in, that's what their comfort level is, or, um, takes a significant amount of time to unload. Um, our staff waits out front, at seven-thirty, everyone, uh, walks into the building and then, uh, there's one, two, three, four, four to five staff members out front, um, assisting in the crosswalk that's there and helping to make sure kids didn't sign. In the afternoon, on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, dismissal is at two-thirty. Um, we run a little different system in the afternoon. Our, uh, pre-k, three-year-olds, first and second graders are in that first lane, um, because they have to be buckled less distance. We release them first and then our first, um, first and second graders, um, also use that lane. Uh, three, four is in that next lane of parking, we have a couple more staff out there. Um, and then five through eight is in that third lane of parking. And so it's a staggered dismissal, um, to get them loaded, um, again, about fifteen minutes before we're clear with traffic. We have had some parents that, um, either get out of their cars. We have had some parents that, um, either get out of their cars and wanna go chit-chat with teachers. We have addressed that with our faculty and staff to please encourage them to get back. Uh, we also address families that have their car in a standstill if they back up traffic. And that has happened periodically, um, when parents don't always, for a variety of reasons, uh, are in a hurry or don't follow the rules and, or don't know the rules particularly with our newer families. Um, in the afternoon, we have also had to address parents specifically about trying to drive past people or try to pick up kids lower down on the street and then try to go around through the parking lot, um, because you, you can't for about fifteen minutes. Um, so by, uh, shortest time we've ever done it, seven minutes, longest time's been about seventeen. Um, but I think this is our second year of running this system and it's gotten a lot better. Um, this year, we haven't had, we haven't been backed up yet to the end of the road like last year.
Are you, are you saying the third lanes in the parking lot?
Yes, third lane and the second lane for dismissal are in the parking lot.
How do you, how do you regulate? How do you educate parents that the fourth grader parent can't be in the first lane?
Sometimes it happens particularly with families that have kids like kindergarten through fifth grade and so they just move, they keep moving to the end, um, to wait. Um, we also have someone, um, we have, we have lane markers out there that direct people which lane. Um, we do, uh, emails out to parents, teachers re-emphasize where they'll be walking their kids to, to be picked up.
So have you done away with the cones which prevent people from turning into the parking lot?
We still have cones, um, our facilities director and safety worker set those up when an area is full. Um, for, for that as, um, to turn in. So if you come too early, you can't get into those lanes, you've gotta pull all the way down towards the pavilion for that. Um, when that, um, first lane gets too full, then we direct people in to come park, um, and assist children in getting over to that side.
Can I?
I, I was gonna ask, you're pulling it down from the, the, um, Bello side, but what, has there ever been a discussion from pulling down from the Aldis side agreeing that way? Because you have a significantly longer access for people to line up in that side and it's closer to the exit when the students come out versus the opposite end.
So we did discuss that with, uh, Joe Paquette and I think Mo came out last year as well of whether, what would happen if we flipped it. Um, and determined that coming around that corner, uh, may cause more disruption as teachers often come in various ways to get into the parking lot. And the traffic flow dropping off to the school has been bellows for multiple years that there was a high potential, um, because there's a parking side, um, right by the trees. And then there's another parking side, so the lane is not as well marked as, as parents drop off, particularly parents that may drop off earlier than the actual school entrance. So it's a little bit harder to police that there. And, um, Joe was really worried about, to be honest, adults coming in late to work on two tires. Um, around that corner and not realizing traffic had been stopped, um, as well.
Okay, there was a middle school announcement recently reminding teachers to arrive in time and not be late, if they're gonna be late, uh, late.
So when parents pick up in front, they're held there, they're like in like a traffic jam? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Like when parents come, if I'm in lane one or two, I go, I pick up my kid and then I'm stuck there for anywhere for eight to twenty minutes?
Well, we have not moved, traffic has not been that backed up, backed up.
But there's no if, alright, so let me just rephrase that. So one, lanes one and two are lined up, so there's no.
So when we say lanes one and two, lane one for us is the right along the curb and then there's.
The breakdown lane, so to speak.
It's a fire lane.
Okay.
So it will hold two cars, one lane has a car and then the next is a go-around. We've left that as a go-around in case someone gets stuck or having a wait.
So I could pick up my kid in lane one and, and get out of there soon so not to back up traffic?
Yes, we fixed that from our first rendition of this.
My other thought, just based on what I see in my parking lot at school, because our traffic goes around the staff lot, our parents, and they get there really early and sometimes our staff can't even get in to park because parents are there so early. But parents don't go bumper to bumper, they might leave a whole car width between themselves.
People out there, you see me out there moving.
Okay, so you've got.
I was actually gonna ask Dr. Gannon to add about health personnel. Because first, that might help you understand, there's a lot of people out there directing traffic.
And my other, and you probably considered this, but my other just thought, quick thought was, I know that staff park over on the side where the gym is, but would there be a way to alleviate some of the traffic in front of the building? If some, maybe it's pre-K and kindergarten picked up in, on that route on, you know, by the gym? Where the, where the, the staff park because the staff will still be there, but I'm just wondering if that was, if that was a thought that might help.
We did discuss that with, uh, Joe. Part of the problem is the buses that pull out in, in from that area when parents drop off. Like the, the buses roll out of there.
Do buses lead?
Because they would come in Bellows.
Yeah, I know how they come in and turn.
And then come out Calvary.
But do, what's the order of dismissal? Everyone dismisses at once or is it like at my school, walkers, kids that get picked up go first and then the bussers go next?
We dismiss by grade band.
Are we more concerned about the morning or the afternoon or both? Both, you're saying both? And did, just out of curiosity, did you look at switching? It used to be buses are on the south side and cars on the north side.
We, yes, we did look, um, we talked with Tercel Transit about what it would take, how, uh, for us to move to the back for car riders to be able to utilize that.
The loop?
The loop, um, and how many buses we could fit, like, how would we stack those? Their concern was child safety, uh, with double stacks of buses.
No, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know if I'm saying anything, but the buses would drop off on the south side of the school where the cars aren't at?
Yes, yeah, we talked, they would have to for.
So they would be double stacked?
They would be double stacked, um, and because we're the first route, those buses have to leave pretty quickly to get State Tech's route, run.
I mean, obviously how you guys operate, release, that makes sense, that's fine. I work in the Milton schools and they do the same thing as the State Tech. The walkers go first and normally the last bus that gets dismissed is loading up, is getting dismissed as the last walkers are actually, or pickup's are actually being picked up and gone. So the back is only clear by the time the buses have actually been cleared out. And I think they used to do grade point, but then you have the people sit and wait for their other kid to show up or, you know, if I was two, the, the second grader or fourth grader, I'm waiting for my fourth grader, I'm still sitting out here reading. It, it's just thought because it's like that kind of changed that.
It's relatively quick between the grade bands. It's, it's enough to, um, get them outside and then we're, so like we call pre-K K first because little kids, they go first. Their recess time is scheduled for the end of the day, so they're usually already out there loading before we actually call them. And then it's K one, two, um, and then, uh, five, six, seven, eight, and then three, four, um, just for a scheduling thing. They asked to go last this year, um, so we've accommodated that. And it really, to be honest, hasn't been a problem for families with multiple kids. They tend to park, um, and, and meet their kids out on the, on the sidewalk.
Does it, does it, State Tech bump people? I mean, oh, your kid's not here, uh, he's not, they're not out yet, there's someone here behind you, go, go back around.
Do the loop?
And they, and they make him go back.
I, I have not seen that, Tim, I've done dismissal and arrival twice this year, so since our school, it's not.
I, I thought that when Roger.
It's like at the airport.
Yeah, when Roger was up there, in the town.
Yeah, that, that, that was, that's been changed.
That's been changed, okay.
Through the pandemic, all of this has changed quite a bit.
Okay.
No one's putting their kids on the bus.
And no one's, well, our buses are full, I'd like to.
Oh, they are, okay.
There's so many more dropping them off yesterday.
Our buses are packed.
When did the buses move out back?
They've been there since, for, for seven years I've been here, child, they've been out back.
I feel like that's where my kids were.
So I wanna give, um, this lady her, her time, so if you folks wanna, do you have anything else to add?
Can I just ask a quick question before you go? How far back, I have this map in front of me, how far back are things getting, um, blocked up on, on a typical day? Like I see the map, I see the school, I see Bello Street and where we can turn by the gym, how far back would you estimate?
Yeah, our goal is to not get it backed beyond the, um.
The turnoff?
Beyond the turnoff, um, it does happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's when we're really, that's when we open up that second.
What do you call on the turnoff, the road that you can get into the gym?
Yeah, that, um.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right in front of the gym.
You mean Bellows and Calvary.
So that's impacting one, two, three, possibly four houses on that, on that road?
Yes.
Right? Is there one hidden in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say last year, um, for pickup, there were cars down to.
Yeah, pickup was worse. We think we've rectified those issues for this year, it has not been as backed up, um, as it has been. Um, first day of school, which is normally our heaviest, uh, take transit day, um, we were clear by seven forty-five.
Do you, I have a question, do you feel like your improvements have drastically helped? You kind of just answered that. And do you feel like there are more to be made or do you feel like you've kind of like got it as good as you can get it?
Um, we always invite, um, uh, St. Albans PD to come out and look and give us a console every year if there's something else that, that we can do. Um, we're releasing an educational video we're working on making as well to let parents know, um.
I think it's also, yes.
For our parents, that's where we get in trouble is parents don't know or they're new to the drop-off line and that's where we get that.
Do you feel like we, like, could you have more buses? Is there a demand for more buses?
Can't afford them.
No, okay, never mind, I'm not a teacher. Um, and what was, uh, was my other thing? Maybe that was it.
If, if we did this one-way thing, I don't know if it's for you guys, Chip, or, are we saying now that the southbound lane would remain open so parents couldn't park on that? So there would always be a, a flow of traffic? So if you look at Bello Street, people park in the northbound lane, but if we made this a one-way street, then you wouldn't be able to double stack on that other lane.
You mean.
Right.
He's referring, uh, northbound towards the school.
Yeah, northbound means towards the school.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know what I mean, like if you're looking at the street.
The, the intent of the proposal is to just have all traffic going west and not, no traffic in that area trying to go east against all the parents coming in. The idea is that they would be able to just drive through the school grounds and get onto Aldis Street in the same direction that everyone else is traveling.
Right, I get that, but if, if you look at the lanes, there's a lane on the, to the south and a lane to the north. You know what I mean?
Oh, one versus the pass-through.
Right. So we're stacking traffic up on the, now you got me confused. Yeah, on the right-hand side or the north-hand side of the road. We're not, then we're not stacking traffic up on the left-hand side, this south side of the road.
You had said they were passing, they like, once they fill it, they can move around and get, there's nothing blocking, nothing doing.
But there's no, with all of your enforcement, with all the people you have out there, you're keeping people from stopping on that side of the road if we do this, correct?
On the left side?
Yeah.
Yeah. The left side becomes the passing lane.
Yeah.
The right side becomes the parking lane.
But then you have the issue where, where you would turn into the parking lot, you have people just cutting through.
I, just to reframe this a little bit, this, this works for the school.
Uh-huh, what's happening now or the one-way?
It does not work in any way, shape or form, as Ms. Ford is gonna tell you.
Wait, which works?
The current, the current practice works really well.
For the school?
For the school.
And it's also September eighth, like school's been in for how long, two weeks?
This has been an issue for the last two years.
Okay, okay.
This is really a conflict between Ms. Ford and the school, instead it says it's gotten middle.
Well, it looks like there's three houses there.
Are, are the other houses, are the other houses having challenges as well?
Not that they're expressing to the school, no.
All right, we're gonna move on, uh, folks, if we'll bring.
Has an engineer looked at this? An engineer instead of just the PD?
Okay, thank you, we'll.
Thanks.
Listen here. Come on up, ladies.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I live in Cricket Court, I live on fourteen Bello Street.
We, we thought that. So you want to start with your draw, what you have here?
Right here, I have a photograph from my camera. Yeah, right here is my car. This car is parked longways in my driveway, blocking me, they pushed my garbage cans over and there are two in a row going in both lanes up the wrong direction.
And that's this year?
This is year, yes.
This school year?
They've also, the parent in there went into the school and left it in the second lane to go into the school to pick up their child. Everybody, every single person in that right lane is not in their vehicle.
What was the date of the, like, when this happened?
April.
So this was last?
It was end of school year, okay.
Last year, so they should know better at that point.
That's why I was asking, yeah.
But they're, they're still going and still driving up the wrong way. If these people.
Can I ask you, when you say the wrong way, you're, you're anticipating.
It's a two-directional road from the intersection of Bello Street and North Elm Street at that stop sign. All the way to my property is two directions. After my property, it becomes one-way.
Yep, okay.
I have no problem with that. My problem is, you turn this into a one-way and this is gonna be worse. I will not be able to get out of my driveway. It's gotten to the point where I'm harassed by parents, I've had bricks thrown through my windows, on my patio, by their kids. I've had my cones that I put up to block people from parking on my lawn stolen, knocked over, videos of that too.
Did, correct me if I'm wrong, um, your work schedule is what? I think that game is a play, right?
I work some days from home and I work some days at the office. My son also works at seven o'clock, my daughter drops off my granddaughter at seven thirty.
And when you work at, at the office, when do you need to be out like?
Usually I can go get, leave by one thirty, I can be home by fuck two thirty, I have to pick up my granddaughter.
You're more of a second shift?
A flex.
Okay.
I pretty much can make my own schedule. But I do have to pick up my granddaughter and that is around two thirty. The problem I have with making Bello Street a one-way is it's not necessary. The signs on the road, every ten to fifteen feet say, no parking in both directions. Why then does this happen? If people are not abiding by the law, why aren't they ticketed? It's a daily thing and they say that they fixed it. The last couple of weeks, yes, it's been great, but it's not gonna stay that way because they'll have people out for the first couple of weeks when I complain. And then after that, there's nobody and this stops and back-to-back traffic. And I have people parking on my driveway. I have a hole in my driveway in the front where people use my driveway as their personal parking spot and back in and back out, back in and back out. I've had to replace the gravel many, many times because people use my property as if it's their, it's their own parking lot. Just like they use Bello Street as their own parking lot. People will sit there and park and get out of their vehicles. Why can't this be enforced? Signs say, no parking. Can you explain to me why that hasn't happened?
Do you have a solution?
Yes.
What, what's your, what, what is your solution?
No passing signs, a double yellow center line down the road.
Yeah.
Bigger signs that say no parking.
Yeah.
Or no stopping and standing. If they have to be in a line to go through, fine, just make sure that people that reside on that road aren't blocked in or run off the road like I have been many, many times. I've had to take the grass over my lawn and my neighbor's lawn to get out for doctor's appointments or for emergencies. My sister was in the hospital and I had to drive over my lawn and my neighbor's lawn to get out because they were parked, there was nobody in the cars.
Does it matter which way you would have to turn as long as it was open for you to get out? Would it, would it matter if you had to go either a right turn or a left turn or a right turn? Would it matter to you?
I would prefer to go right because there's less traffic.
It's easier to, to get to Elm Street.
Yeah, there's less traffic, I don't have to fight people.
Okay.
There is a huge bunch of trees between the driveway, my driveway, which my driveway is literally ten feet from the school's parking lot.
Yeah, we see it, we, we all have a map.
Yeah.
So for the people that come out, I have videos of people coming out of the one-way parking lot the wrong way and driving over. So, for the people that they come out, I have videos of people coming out of the one-way parking lot the wrong way and driving over the sidewalk. I have hundreds of thousands of hours of videos of people driving and running me off the road. Twenty-six years.
And this has never been an issue before?
Always been an issue. Always.
Why is there not a double yellow, is it because the street isn't?
Double yellow on city streets?
They used to have no parking painted on the sidewalk, that's not there anymore.
We, do you think people would actually listen though, not to be, I'm not being sarcastic, I just know what our pickup line looks like in Colchester and. A, a lot of rules seem to go out the window, but we have an army of people out there.
If you put a police officer out there. For two weeks and ticketed these people. That wouldn't be a problem, I got two tickets for being parked on my driveway, why hasn't anybody else been ticketed, I don't get it. Like I am on my, on my lawn, I was parked on my lawn and I got two tickets.
On your lawn or on your?
I got one of those too.
Yeah, but I get ticketed. They didn't get ticketed for being parked in the no parking zone.
But you didn't get ticketed for being in your driveway, you got ticketed for being on, in your front yard setback, or in your front yard green space, right?
But they didn't get ticketed for being parked and they illegally parked, or blocking traffic, or backing up traffic, or driving up the wrong way, or speeding, which they do constantly. Every day they speed, I have videos of that every single day for twenty-six years.
The issues that you're talking about are not within the school's control, right, like how they do dismissal is, but as far as enforcing parking. Giving people tickets, like that is not something that the superintendent or the principal.
It's not something that the city does either, apparently.
Well, we don't, I mean.
It's a known issue.
Yeah, we have a, we have a lot of other issues that are more pressing, I guess.
If we were to follow these suggestions, it would create a huge operational hurdle. And, and cluster for the school, we, we, we cannot do what Cricket is suggesting. Without significantly impeding the ability of the school to do their current dismissal, is that fair? Here's what it goes, you know, so, uh, every day since school has started, Cricket has sent an email complaining about it. What Cricket would like is to be able to go out her driveway and have clear passage, to, to be able to take a right and have clear passage in a two-way street.
As, as, all of us would.
All, all of us would, yeah, mo- and many people that live around large dense schools, employers, everybody would like this. We can't give Cricket what she wants without negatively impacting the ability of the school.
Well, I don't know if that is true.
I don't know if I agree with that statement either.
The one-way starts after her driveway, so it's supposed to? And the issue is that people are not abiding by what the signs say.
They go one way back further down the street. My question, Michael, excuse me, my question for uh Dr. G and, and Bill is. What, what are your parking limitations? And can you eliminate the first row of parking in that parking lot? So you cross the street, you have some veteran parking there, you have handicap, you have a few others. Could that be eliminated to allow for another lane of traffic? I think you have a total of probably, I'm gonna guess sixteen spots.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we could Tim, um I'd have to go out there and do a s- uh parking survey, but going there various hours. I see the parking lot probably eighty to ninety percent full, um like I said, I do have to get someone to sit there and do counsel whatever. Without that data, it, it all, I'm guessing.
I have another suggestion, I, I'm not trying to be a bee or anything, I just want to be able to safely get out, I'd like, I've been backed up. I had a car come at me and I sent the video, they pulled out of the wrong lane as I was exiting with my granddaughter in the car. And they jet their car forward at me, I had to reverse, I could, could, kid could have been behind me crossing the street and I could have hit them. What I'm suggesting is, let them pass in the right lane, let them stay in the right lane to go ahead and pick up a drop-off right next to the school, that's great. Can't they make it a turnaround and go all the way around to the, the other side of the school, to the, what is it, what was the street behind it? Why can't they just make it all the way around?
You want us to add a road?
Yes, make it a U-turn. Just like right around the building and out through Calvary.
Around the back of the building?
That would, yeah, but we could completely eliminate, eliminate all of the traffic.
So that would be connecting.
My, my suggestion, we could stay here all night, but my suggestion would be, we pick, well, pick a week. We'll make a point of standing down there for a half hour, get a feel for it. And see where.
I can't get out of my school parking lot in time, cause the parents are picking up their kids.
I would, I'd like to add to that, I think it's also education too, you guys are probably doing excellent, I know I've done this as a communication person for Milton, doing the education drop-off. And yes, they built a whole road behind Milton School to stop her from having all the parking on it, and it's not always feasible, but. Absolutely enforcing, you see a plane of people out there, the no parking at all in that lane, like if they're parking there, you guys go wait for a spot. Stay in your car, cause if they get out of the car going to school, you don't get your kid, go back to your car and wait till you get a spot, it's just, I, I think that's gonna help mitigate some of this, right?
And do those people, those people like stay out there all year, because I know when things get busy, like so people that don't have classrooms. That are, are like, everyone's kids are dismissing and people who don't have chi- children that are in their response, that they're responsible for. I would just send all the, all the guards out. Can you post someone like rate?
I, I keep thinking this is a morning problem, but.
They also park there after school for s- open doors and stuff.
For you, is the morning an issue?
Morning and afternoon are an issue, not so much morning for me, but for my um daughter picking and dropping off my granddaughter and my son, who has to go to work around seven.
Dr. G, is it worse from your perspective in the morning or afternoon?
Uh more traffic in the afternoon. I would say that's, um mornings are very smooth, afternoons are um lots of alternate people picking up kids. Dropping off, not always familiar with the thing, um we had that some incidents of people speeding, I see that more in the afternoon than a little more.
You know the yellow. Markers, I think Marty put them down on the corner of uh North Elm Street? The baller, the baller, smaller, can those be lined up down the middle of that with a large sign? Is there any, there's, is there anything beyond the two-lane lane, two, two-lane portion down past Ms. Ford's house? Uh, keeping the two lanes separated? Like uh Swanton's done it with the ballards on their parking area downtown, which makes it.
To the extent that the council is more persuaded by Cricket's position, and that you want us to protect your right to get out, we could explore options.
Well, we're, uh, isn't this your committee, aren't you public safety? I thought, I thought you were. You're public safety and so aren't you, and so aren't you, right, Lindsay, Marie, and why, why aren't, why come you three got?
We weren't, we weren't asked, thanks. I didn't know about this.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think it's as dire as you think, as you're saying.
Cr- Cricket's a very forceful and effective advocate, she emails the chief of police, the superintendent of schools, the city manager, non-stop. Until her problem is solved.
That's her right, that's her right.
And so, we need, you know.
Daily issue.
And so, to the extent, I mean, what I look at, i- if, if we wanna say Cricket has a right to get out. Then we got, then we gotta build some additional space here, or we have to enforce the fact that thou shall not cross the double yellow line. That's Cricket's position, thou shall not cross the double.
There isn't a double yellow line, right?
The middle line, paint the line and make sure nobody crosses.
What is this ordinance, do you, beyond what's happening now?
Yeah, I feel like Chad, you've brought up before.
Takes what's happening now and removes the expectation that you could easily go east in the first place, so it becomes a non-issue.
So it's always one-way?
Go through the school grounds and get out of all the street and then drive down all the street, get to Elm there.
But then for those houses, they could potentially get stuck in that line. I get nervous about enacting a traffic law for only a portion of the day. That makes me nervous. And honestly, for one person, no, no. Is it an issue for the other people on the street? That makes me nervous.
My neighbor, the one right next to me.
Yeah, but they aren't just, they aren't as vocal as you.
No, but they're also. Nobody's as vocal as I am. Is there a way that we can widen the road then maybe?
I wanna come see.
Well, Tim, you suggested that with the parking law, I don't think it's been looked into enough, why don't we get the committee to make a suggestion to the co- council and then we'll be done with it?
Can, can the public safety committee? Meet about this? Go down, check it out, um connect with the superintendent and Dr. G. Maybe think about coming up with a plan and then bringing it, bringing it back. I have a reflective vest, I'm ready. And I think that there are things that you've, like that the school's been said you can't do, that other schools are doing, so even though it might not be like preferred, like to double stack the buses, we do that. It's fine, we have a lot of people doing duties.
Very tight.
But like.
We'll find out, our three people will find out.
I mean, they always did in the past.
So, w- is that something that, do you think that?
I think the, the, you don't need a motion, but you know.
Do you think that's a good idea?
I think it's a great idea for the committee to look for a solution.
Finally got something to do, we finally have something to do.
Trudy can't even do it, she can't get out of schooling time. I'll be there.
I moved the table to first reading of the Bellow's free one-way drop-off and pickup until the safety committee makes recommendations. Second, okay, go.
We'll look in a second, any further comments?
Didn't call for an extension.
All those in favor say aye, anyone oppose, motion passes.
Thank you.
I would like to stay abreast of any issues that, if they're gonna pass anything or if there's any, any further meetings.
Chip, do you wanna be a part of these meetings with the school and our committee? Is that helpful or no?
Alright, thank you folks for coming in. We're gonna move on to uh approval of water allocation for Richard Cummings.
We'll be in touch.
Give you something to do, can't we just build a road here? A pump out here? I don't see why you, that sounds good to me.
We don't have to meet, we, we got it solved.
We have to name the road.
I tell you what, I think the allard separates it, gives, it gives the.
Sounds like you guys all wanna be in my committee.
Hey, are we still talking about this, I thought we got done, let's go.
I already brought it up, no one wants to name it.
Chip, what's going on with this water allocation?
I don't know.
Yep, seven Lydia Lane, or seven single-family homes on Lydia Lane.
For those who don't know, that's out by Mother Hubbard's. Bushy Road. Uh, new houses going in, we have approved allocations for Mr. Cummings in the past, he's uh asking for seven more. In that region.
How far out, I know we go up seven to almost the Warner's, almost, it's like right before the. But how far out do we go and what's our limit, do we have like a cutoff?
Uh, no.
There's no maximum capacity for pumps to be able to go that far?
Well, that would be considered, but you know. All of that's on them, you know, this is just an allocation of capacity, capacity of the water plants is almost done.
Me, my, my, my question is like, we're putting it on them and there's cost obviously to do installations, but at what point, like do we suddenly have these add-ons? And now we have to up the increase of pump, or we have to buy a major pump, does that come back on the city for that cost, do we put that on that developer that pushes us past that point? Okay, thank you.
What, can you, I'm new to this, um, why, what? Be nice, um, does the town not have their own, like why are they applying for the city?
No, no infrastructure for water or sewer.
So, everyone in the town accesses?
This is, is this, is this Swanton?
Actually in Swan.
It's in, it's actually Swanton, um, uh, that's Swanton property up there, so this is a Swanton residences. Getting allocation from the city of Saint Albans.
Right, why are they getting the, from the city of Saint Albans?
Yeah, they have to have all wells.
Cause the town is. I see, I see. City and town, water, sewer. Is all combined.
Our water does not go all the way throughout the town, only in certain portions.
I see, okay.
But why would they choose to go off the citywide versus drilling out there?
What would you do?
Like I get that, but like, like why would we like go beyond border and say, no, no, you guys are small and figure it out, versus.
We're doing that with Saint Albans Town.
I, I get that.
We have unlimited capacity too.
Yeah, we get, now we're gonna have more.
It adds to that nice report that Sarah shared with us earlier about the enterprise fund and whatnot, so.
So, uh. Are we aware of any kind of pressure?
So.
What are you asking?
I wanna cross-reference this with the water, with the police agreement. Cause it's extraterritorial water and sewer, and I just wanna be, you know, this is the first time it's come up.
And it's in Swanton, not the town.
Actually, I, I disagree, cause we've already approved this before in the, in Swanton, as we did with the um. State office, or state office. But it, it may, to your point, it may be good to.
So, we, we have a, we have a system in place for users who are not part of the agreement that we entered into with the town. This, you're, you're saying this is not subject in that agreement, which is?
Saying I haven't, I haven't thought about it, honestly, you know, like, I haven't.
Do you wanna table it?
I, we should table this thing.
I haven't looked at an application from Swanton. In light of.
And we're in agreement, right, that we don't want, we would rather, we don't want out-of-counters getting our water at the same rate that we're paying, it's our plan. So I thought this was under the enhanced charge that we had in place before we had the agreement with, with the town residents.
We have to look at the affiliate, you know, so.
Yeah, the affiliation charge, yeah.
Do you need a motion to table, or do you just?
Yeah, it's for, up for discussion, votes.
Keep in, keep in mind, you're gonna be backtracking on what's been approved so far.
Well, when, when was that approved though? Post the agreement?
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
But that was also the state of Vermont, this is residential. Where was I, in Florida?
No, but, eh, cause he's, how many homes does he have up there, ten, twelve?
Oh, we've approved his already in Swanton.
Approved those. So.
Do you wanna table it, or do you wanna approve it with a, with a caveat in the motion that we um just confirm the, the, the rate?
I think the mayor's advice is, you don't approve this, it's gonna be held to pay, you wanna fix it, fix it next time.
Well, I, I think this brings up the discussion.
I mean, we're probably not gonna go too much further. I mean, this development is passed, I mean, how much further are we gonna run our water?
Those are famous last words, you know?
But I also do wanna explore, like it's.
You know, last time.
Why would Swanton get the same rate that I get as a city taxpayer for water, and that doesn't make too sense to me.
Well, the other thing is, is the more customers we get, you know, should, should we be competitive with these new developments? To get more customers, more customers would be more income.
Also more work?
They pay for the water extension.
As long as the maintenance keeps included in our calculations.
But if we're giving water and sewer out beyond our borders, why should Saint Albans Town be in the police agreement with us? You know, we use the water and sewer as a lever for the police agreement.
No, I agree with you. I agree with Trudy, I agree.
Yeah, you know, so, uh, you know, I, I don't feel like the toothpaste is out of the tube on this one, I think, you know, maybe we should have caught it with the next one. But, but the previous ones, but you know, I, we're asking, we're asking for a month, right?
But couldn't we approve it and just charge him more than the city and town case, because he's not part of our, that, that place is not part of our agreement?
You need time to figure this out.
Alright, make, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table the approval for water allocation for Richard Cummings.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Trudy, seconded by Marie, and uh, any other questions? We have a motion from Trudy, seconded by Marie. And, uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes. We'll move on to, um, favorite discussion, um, first reading. Chip, thank you for putting that together to ban roosters within the city limits. Covering law grounded.
I promise not to. When you're talking.
So now that we're at the halfway point of tonight's meeting, uh, I thought, uh, you know, the memo explains it. Backyard chickening, I, I think nationwide, but certainly in Vermont and certainly in the city. It's, um, it's pretty easy to do, except every once in a while, someone ends up with a rooster. And roosters are just, no pun intended, like a totally different animal from anything else that is domesticated. And, um, our noise ordinance just is not up to par, I think, with managing them as a nuisance. And in a densely populated downtown surrounded by neighborhoods, we are pitching the idea that, um, as with many other municipalities, roosters probably just don't belong. So that's the tact that this ordinance amendment is taking.
Chip, one question, and I might've skimmed over it, but, uh, does this address, um, that no rooster will be grandfathered?
Well, typically with a, with a classic municipal ordinance under our charter, we do not have to grandfather.
Right, we do not have to.
Yeah, actually normally if you wanna grandfather something with an ordinance change, you kinda have to put that in there.
Which I don't, but do we wanna specify that no rooster is grandfathered?
Um, this, the way this is written, that as soon as a rooster is discovered, and it could be an existing rooster, if something being discovered, it's subject to the ordinance.
Do we know where the roosters are?
We know where a couple of them are.
Tim knows where they are.
And is this clear enough for the people raising them from chicks that don't really identify them until I can forecut?
That's one since it.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, you can't identify.
Yeah, that's a problem. That's part of the problem.
It takes like four months. Takes a while.
Will you take all the roosters?
A lot of households that discover, yeah, most households don't want roosters just as much as their neighbors don't want roosters. And when they discover they have a rooster, they gotta figure something out.
There's a few, that's, there's a few that aren't on that page.
Right, I know. And this sort of, you know, makes everyone, it doesn't say, doesn't say, it says, once you discover a rooster, we've gotta come up with a plan. And that's basically, and the plan sort of, it, it ramps up until the rooster is, you know.
It's not just in the morning.
I thought it was a morning wake-up call.
I've heard it driving up rain.
So, um, I have thoughts. Um, I feel like, well, for one, in the second paragraph says often the issues would resolve themselves over time as owners decide to remove their roosters or as windows close for the winter. I feel like we're going into a, I don't feel like it's fair to make someone kill their rooster, cause no one wants them.
They could rehome them.
No one says anything about killing.
No one is going to rehome, who's gonna rehome their rooster?
We've seen a lot of posts about people offering roosters for rehoming.
I just would be pro, if we know where the couple are that are there, grandfathering them until like, give them a few months.
I'd beg to differ.
No, me neither.
You're not living next to one.
Yes, I am.
And it's pre-existing, not grandfathered.
Whatever.
She's rooster positive.
I'm not rooster, I'm not rooster positive. I think about.
Where these, where these roosters are.
Well, that's the, that's the thing. Can I just say, it could be a public safety issue, but that's not how it's being raised to us. Roosters can be dangerous around children. That, like, I, but that's not, no.
You're saving a place.
But if that's how it was, if that's how it was being raised to us, I would say yes, because they can be dangerous. I grew up with chickens. I was attacked by multiple roosters, but.
You're not rooster positive.
No, I'm.
I'm more concerned with loud trucks, honestly.
I'm more concerned about.
I had to pick.
Children having to watch their rooster be killed when it was their pet.
No one said anything about killing.
I don't, I wouldn't even prove that. And I'm, and I'm hard.
I'm more involved in this industry than I want to be.
There, there are people in more rural areas.
Right.
Who want, who want roosters to protect their chickens.
They don't actually protect chickens.
There are, there are, there are multi-rooster flocks out there.
Very few.
Yeah, but.
And they get killed.
Okay.
Are we throwing a chicken out on this?
Are you suggesting, are you making a motion to amend the?
I just feel like two weeks is not a lot of time for a rooster that no one wants.
Well, this is.
The sentence is too short.
This is also just the first reading. So they're gonna have, well, they're gonna have a whole month.
Okay.
And then they're gonna have two weeks.
Okay, I just feel like people need a little more time.
You just need to make sure it's publicized, so this is kinda.
Does anyone agree with Lindsay on having more time on the ordinance?
That's just, that, there's plenty of time in the ordinance. That's just before fines may or may not start, which the council can actually correct during their hearing the way this is written. Like, I, there, the way this is written, if someone comes in and says, hey, I'm, I've tried, it's been more than two weeks, could you please give me more time and restart the fines? The way this is written, the council can do that during the hearing, if it gets to the hearing stage.
Just like the landlord, I think we got flexibility.
Okay.
So it's, it's bad.
Do you have a rooster in here?
Any other questions on this?
Unless you're a farmer.
Maybe you should be at your office more often.
Are there any roosters in the sort? The alligators.
Key, Key West.
There's no roosters on your boat. Exactly, yeah.
Send the pit bull.
It's gonna be in my yard. I'll put it in my yard for a while.
I'll send my pit bull down there.
Alright, any other comments on the ordinance?
You can tell it's getting late.
Well, we don't chicken out with it.
Alright, so.
Well done, Mike.
Chip, you'll bring it back for a second reading?
Yeah.
I will say this was a little jovial, but I have had complaints.
I've had complaints.
Really.
Multiple complaints.
They don't think it's funny. Alright, so I'm gonna let you know that now, yeah.
I'm not pro-rooster. I'm just, feel like people need a little time.
Okay, we're moving on. Everyone's good with that? Second reading of overnight parking at Barlow Street?
This one does come from a public safety event. Uh, it was about, um, feeling safer around Barlow Street Park if people could not gather overnight and, uh, in those parking areas. And after conversations with Eric, we also added the, um, the parking area for three or four cars that's on the Barlow Street side across from the playground. So, you know, and, and I think you could look at it this way. If the park closes at nine PM, you don't need to be parked in the park, parking areas.
And I spoke to a couple of neighbors that I had voiced concerns with last time, and they said they'd make amendments to how they do things, so they're fine with it.
Yeah, and it does give the ability, I mean, if there's an event, you can park there. If there's a permit, you can park there.
Yeah, this was one of the neighbors that parks across, over there when I was visiting, he didn't care. He's like, that's fine.
Does Barlow Street, uh, host events that are not city-wide?
Yes.
Yeah, they have, um, sports events up there as well.
Would they, would they interfere with these hours?
I don't know about past nine PM.
No, no.
Okay, so it would never interfere with?
Soccer.
There's no lights in the field, so it's like most of the time.
What about inside the building?
They could talk, they're our tenant. They could talk to us about getting this special.
Okay.
But then there's.
I can't say the last.
Do the basketball courts and the pickleball courts, are they lit?
We want those locked. Yeah, no.
So they're, so that's closed at nine. No, no one should be shooting hoops or playing pickleball at that time.
I drive around that corner like two or three times a day, and I can say in the evenings I've gone by at least three or four times a week, their lights are out by nine o'clock latest, so, yeah.
What's the enforcement look like? So, when we, when we have ordinances that we're not enforcing, what would the enforcement look like?
If the police pulled up upon them, and there was someone there after nine, they would.
Say move along.
The implication is they wouldn't pull in.
If there's some of them, if there's someone what they wanna move along, this gives them the tool to say you need to move along.
And they know that we're doing this, the PD?
I think the neighbors too would call. PD, right?
Oh, yeah, they would call and say, hey, someone's parking here.
Since the last meeting, one person actually emailed me saying they've watched people sit over there in their cars waiting for people to walk up from the villa. And they walk back downstairs, they meet with them, and then they head out. So, and that's at any hour of the day, including.
Make a motion to, uh, um, approve the overnight parking ordinance as it has been amended.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Ken, seconded by Eric. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to number 10, which is the grant list errors and new emissions.
We do this once a year, or we do this nearly every year, um, corrections that are necessary for the grant list. This one's larger because the reappraisal and the fact that we changed our valuation software has led to some little data errors here and there, and then some other, um, larger issues that home is correcting. But the memo basically lines out the thirteen cases before us. A few of them are because the lots are actually tax exempt, we need to mark them tax exempt, and then one is a big one, a catch we knew that the parking garage needs to be valued the way we had it valued before, income-based, which gives it a zero value because it operates at a loss. So those, those are some of the examples.
Any questions for Chip? What's the property on Russell Street we own?
It's a very thin lots, um, that came into our hands because someone basically, I don't know if it was a tax sale or if it was someone gave it up to the city. It's in between forty-two and forty-six Russell.
It's not big enough for a building lot?
Uh, could be explored, but it's pretty thin. It would be challenging.
Did we follow up on seventy-five Lincoln? They came up in that meeting as their property had more than doubled in its value. And when we looked it up in the charts, there was not major changes to it. It just seemed like their numbers off. I think we said we would try to follow up with them. I don't see that.
When did that come out?
That came up there in the meeting that we had in the auditorium.
The hearing?
The hearing.
After the.
That, that was.
Well, yeah, I did follow up. I followed up with Wendy.
Okay.
We, it hasn't really.
Hasn't changed at all?
No, it hasn't really given us any new information.
Is it the practice of the city when, um, one owner has contiguous lots to either tax each lot separately, or do they just tax the whole two lots?
We, the state rule is that they're supposed to be joined, but we are not, in, in the, between the past and just keeping up with everything, sometimes we don't always catch those.
Okay. But if, if you do catch it, then you, you're gonna, you're gonna tax it as one lot rather than two?
You tax it as one lot and the property card, like if it's two houses, the property card has to say there are two houses on it. You gotta make sure that the total value is worth the same as they were separately. We have to go through a bunch of, we have to jump through a bunch of hoops and make a lot of notes.
So what happens if one of the houses sells? They, you then need to split them into?
Yeah, they get split, cause there's still two legal lots. It's just that they're being joined administratively for taxation. And what happens is that the change doesn't really take effect on the grant list until the next April first. So the lawyers have to figure it out for closing.
Yep. Motion to approve the corrections to the April one, two thousand twenty-five grant list.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any questions for Chip? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes. We'll move on to item number eleven, which is the resolution for the vibrancy fund grant. Chip, that's you again.
We, oh, this is the downtown vibrancy. There's a letter that comes with the downtown grant where the municipality basically says, we're not going to take this money for our downtown and use it for something that we already budgeted for. We're not gonna, um, supplant something previously budgeted. And in the case of our grant, that's true. The St. Albans or the future is using this money for things that the city hadn't already budgeted for.
Such as?
Uh, they're gonna be spending the money on making Hallmark in the park bigger with more activities, some media, video and photography for the website and other activities. And then I think if, if they're able to, they might be able to start funding some public car on some alternate basis.
Make a motion that we accept the municipal letter of antestation of the downtown grant.
Motion second. Any questions for Chip? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Number twelve, public hearings. Trudy, motion to adjourn. Uh, number twelve, public hearing for VCDP grant for home repair loan, which we have seen before. Uh, Chip, wanna give a quick overview of it?
Yeah, I'll be joined up here by Travis Phillips from Champlain Housing Trust.
Travis, you have nothing else to do today?
Definitely not. Nothing, nothing is important.
I gave my heads up.
It's like reality TV.
Yeah, right.
Nonprofit has to go through a, a municipality to get to the HUD block grant points that the VCDP program, the state hands out. And CHT, Champlain Housing Trust, has been going through us for this home repair loan program for several years now, partially because we're very familiar with the VCDP program, and so we know, you know, how to check all the boxes and all the guys and everything. Um, I'll let Travis go into more detail about what the program does.
Yeah, so, um, I'm Travis Phillips from the associated director of running with Champlain Housing Trust. So we received our loan fund, and one of them is, one of the programs in the loan fund is this home repair program. Um, this program is available to any low-income Vermont'er in Chittenden, Franklin and Grand Isle County. We define low, uh, low income as eighty percent AMI or less. Um, and this particular program is used to repair essential life safety, uh, accessibility, um, you know, uh, repairs of people's homes that they can't, or less afford to do themselves. Um, we do this by issuing, uh, low-income amortizing or deferred mortgages, or occasionally grants as well in cases of really extreme need. Um, program's been in place for forty-ish years at this point. Um, and on an annual basis, we'll do between twenty and thirty-five, uh, home repair projects in our region. Um, and, um, you know, really looking forward to continuing a relationship with the city of St. Albans and everyone here and, uh, serving more, more low-income Vermonters in our area.
So we did this, how long ago, Chip?
Twenty-two.
And that money has been expended?
Uh, almost. Yeah, we're coming up to, it's a three-year grant cycle, and we're coming up on the end of our current grant and applying for the next three-year grant cycle. Uh, we apply for one year of funding, um, with the understanding that, uh, two more enhancements of that grant to add additional funding based on what we're seeing already is. Uh, so we anticipate having all of our current funding expended by the end of this year, yes.
And this is for the full county, right?
This is for three county areas except for Raleigh.
Yeah.
Chittenden, Franklin and Grand Isle.
I was curious about, why was the city chosen? Like, I, I love this program, but I was, when I saw Chittenden County, I know we're usually like Franklin, Grand Isle County. I saw Chittenden County, I'm just like.
Um, that's a great question. Honestly, I, I can't answer that. I am relatively new to Champlain Housing Trust, so the relationship with St. Albans was here when I got here.
Which Milton, Milton had been doing it for a while and, and I don't know if it was a staff change or something there, but they decided to stop. Uh, CHT had been engaged with us with Congress Main Project. We, everyone knew where everyone else was, and they said, hey, could you folks do it? And we said, sure.
Do you know why Milton stopped?
Um, I don't, but nothing in our experience has been so bad that we might wanna make the same decision so far, so. I think maybe Sarah has something to do with it.
Coming back to Montevideo. I mean, this only serves to improve the houses in our community.
I see these a lot.
And to help people.
Yeah, yeah.
This is very helpful for people that need funds to fix something, you know. There, you don't have to pay anything on them unless, what, you refinance or sell the property, then you have to pay it back?
Um, if your income is high enough, so I think it's above like sixty percent AMI, uh, we can do amortizing loans, but if there's, for whatever reason, if your income is that high, but you have other significant issues, medical debts, things like that, or we deem that there's, that, uh, requiring an amortizing loan would be a hardship, we can go to our own loan committee and have that switched over to a deferred.
Yeah.
Um, anyone below, below a certain AMI level automatically essentially gets a deferred loan. And in that case, you don't have to make any payments on it. Uh, it will accrue interest at one percent, but you won't have to pay anything until you may refinance your home or sell at some point in the future.
Got any, uh, good feel-good stories?
Oh, God, every week. Yeah.
Local.
Local.
Yeah, a lot of things I know.
It's hard, it's hard to say. Um, we did one, I believe it was in Swanton. I had, can't remember exactly, um, but it was a, a couple, they had some, uh, health issues. They were on disability. Um, we came in and repaired their roof, replaced, I think, their hot water heater and a bunch of their windows. Um, and we, I think we ended up putting over twenty-five thousand dollars into their home for them to put them in a situation to just be comfortable in the winter and, you know, remediate any ongoing moisture or mold.
That's an excellent. I know a house on, uh, Rublee Street that could use some, uh. That's an excellent. I know a house on Ruble Street that could use some porch money, porch painting money, that kind of thing. Porch rehab, okay.
Do you do any marketing or outreach for it?
We do. Yeah, earlier this year, actually, we did a, uh, a mailer, we did a flyer that went out to, I think, over five thousand homes in our region. We target a lot of Franklin County, frankly, because Chittenden County's a little higher income, there's a lot more homeowners in this area that kind of meet the criteria for this program. And we saw a significant amount of additional patients kind of happen out, so.
Do you find your staff often have to deal with folks who are reticent at first to deal with the program?
Um, occasionally.
And you can sort of talk them through it and convince them?
Definitely. You know, a lot of folks are hesitant to take on debt, um, as I would understand. And, you know, having the option to do a deferred loan, occasionally offering grants as well, kind of helps us sort of bridge that gap.
Would this also be a program for first-time home buyers that are, you know, barely able to buy their home, let alone then do all the repairs? If they meet the income level?
It theoretically could be. We do require that homeowners have enough equity in their home to take on additional debt. And we are doing a mortgage, so we won't go above, I, I think it's a hundred and five percent of loan value. So as long as they have some substantial equity in their home and they meet our income requirements, we're happy to do that. And we do see applicants do that.
Ready for motion time?
One last question, would you be open to setting up a table till meeting day?
Absolutely. We love tabling, we do it all the time.
Okay, any other questions? Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion to consider a resolution for a VCDP grant for home repair loan program.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second by Marie, thank you. Any other questions for Chip? Travis? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip. Thanks, Travis. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so late. Sorry you were...
Absolutely.
Low on the agenda tonight.
We're actually only five minutes past.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's no license, Chip, that's just the weather.
Yeah, you wanna, should we, should we bring up the booster issue again?
All right, we're going to resolution to opt into Act two fifty, tier one B exemption. Want to get some explanation, Chip?
Act one eighty-one came out of the two thousand twenty-five session, the last legislative session. One of the things, it, it really, one of the things it did was it looked at, are there areas of the state that should not be subject to Act two fifty to the extent that they have been? And it actually made many areas such as our downtown and maybe our growth center, if I remember correctly. Housing developments of up to fifty units are now exempt from Act two fifty in the center of the city. And furthermore, municipalities can opt into solidifying that status permanently with, uh, new land area designations that the regional planning commissions are putting together with the process that was set up by Act one eighty-one. So the city, as you see, is proposed to be a downtown center in the dark purple in the middle. And then a planned growth area in all that pink area, the dark pink. And we can opt in to make permanent this special Act two fifty allowance in these areas of the city. If we opt into the tier one B status. All of our zoning rules still apply. This is just whether or not Act two fifty should be reviewing projects above the tier one B status in the city. Frankly, we recommend that, um, that we apply for the tier one B status.
Why?
Act two, you know, Act two fifty was written back in the seventies as, as a response to, um, you know, interstates being built, people coming up to Vermont, lots of development happening. But a lot of what you were seeing out in the rural landscape and the working landscape. And it's helped keep a lot of Vermont, keep looking like Vermont, and it's helped to some extent dealing with regional issues of large developments. But for the most part, Act two fifty shouldn't really have a role in a place like the city of Saint Albans where we have good zoning and good processes and we're already dense. And we're trying to redevelop, like, we're trying to redevelop all the time. And we don't need yet another regulatory process that developments are subject to.
Would this impact, like, I, I don't like this, what the direction the state went in around telling us what we can do in our neighborhoods.
Right.
Would this impact that at all? Where they've like limited the parking spaces, limited the, like, made the ability to put a two-family home wherever there's a one-family home? Like, are, does this impact any of those rules that the state put in place?
Because that four-unit allowance that they sort of forced into our zone is, is lower than what would trigger Act two fifty review anyway. So what's gonna happen to our neighborhoods?
The answer is no, they've already done it to us. This doesn't affect it.
Yeah.
I, okay. I just, you know, like, I think, I'll just speak for myself, I want to preserve the neighborhoods that we have, the streets we have, the single-family homes as much as possible.
And that's, that's gonna be, those would be some major topic points in the city plan update that we're working on right now. Our zoning rules already address some of those and we can continue to work on that. But what, we should focus on putting that into our zoning to the extent we can and not relying on some other process to do it for us, which brings a lot of other things with it that we probably don't appreciate.
Does, is the city ordinance is zoning strong enough where like, you know, one of our new building, like, Grant can't put a billboard on the top of his building that says, you know, Timmy Hawkins' law practice or whatever, you know?
Yeah, in fact, that's, yeah, we have, we have rules that would prevent things like that.
You know what I mean, like, we're gonna try and keep our downtown the way our downtown is.
Yeah.
Act two fifty has helped with a lot of that throughout the years, is this weakening that protection?
The, the biggest way that Act two fifty has helped our downtown is, is bringing, forcing a sensitivity onto development outside our downtown. That kind of doesn't go away, there, there's nothing we can do to affect that. That still exists up until the point at which parts of the town may, may or may not be exempt, but that's not our decision, that's between the town and the state.
It does take away some protections from a person who would object to a big development going on. Because if the city was going one way and someone was objecting, they at least had the Act two fifty review process to counter what the city was gonna do. Examples, someone who wants a big development somewhere in the city, our zoning rules allow it to have it. I don't want a development there. Well, I know I'm gonna fail in the city. My last straw of defense is to go to Act two fifty and make my case with them. Uh, and now that's gonna go away, now the only person that's gonna be standing in my way is gonna be the city. So.
Is that what happened in the town with the Parsons?
No.
Avenue? That's different than...
Yeah, yeah. But having said that, I'll make a motion, just to keep things moving along.
Waiting for that other shoe.
Uh, to, uh, opt into the Act two fifty tier one B exemption. And hopefully, I always agree with what the city's doing.
We have a motion in a second regarding resolution of the Act two fifty, one B tier. Any other questions of Chip? Comments, none? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
A little louder, please. Aye.
Should we just wait on this next one till next month?
All right.
Oh, you're waiting, sorry.
Moving on to item number fifteen, which is to consider approval of loan extensions from the finance department.
Thank you. I have three items in front of you. The first is the annual authorization to renew or re-up our tax anticipation note. We have last year, two million dollars in tax anticipation borrowing. I am proposing we use the same level this year. This helps us cover our early expenditures, specifically our bond payments due in November while we span the rest of the fiscal year collecting taxes quarterly. Uh, we use this as a general revenue anticipation note. We leave it open throughout the year and borrow on it as needed to manage cash. Uh, like I said, the first half of the year, it's more critical, um, but then other times during the year, if the payout on our short-term investments, for example, doesn't exactly line up with how, when we have to pay the school, we'll draw on it to bridge a week or two here or there as well. So this is a really important tool in our cash management toolbox and I would ask the council to authorize approving it for the, the current fiscal year.
I make a motion to approve loan extension from the finance department.
My second. Motion for Trudy, second by Chad. Any questions for Sarah? Slash finance department. Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item on the list is to authorize short-term borrowing for the recently purchased Messenger Building at two eighty-one Main Street. And I'm requesting the council authorize a twelve-month note for the six hundred thousand dollars for this purpose.
Any questions for Sarah? Make a motion? Entertain a motion?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, uh, six hundred thousand dollars anticipation, anticipation note for the Messenger Building.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions for Sarah? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We're losing our enthusiasm.
Let me see if I can pump you back up. Third item on this memo is difficult for me after nine. Uh, but the third item on this memo is a renewal of a five hundred thousand dollar short-term note that we have used to purchase and hold the lot at one hundred through one twenty Federal Street. This was a H-Tech project, we've remediated the site and now it is actively listed for sale and as soon as we sell it, we'll pay this one off.
A motion to approve a five hundred thousand dollar short-term note for the purchase of one hundred to one twenty Fed.
Second.
Second. Any questions for Sarah? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
There we go. There was another thing in your packet, it didn't make the agenda, we can talk about it in a slum.
Thank you.
We're talking, uh, enterprise?
Internal control room. Didn't make the list, but it made into a packet, we can chat about it.
Do you want to just look at the email you sent out regarding water and wastewater? And stormwater?
Oh, that's my year-end financial update. I'd be happy to give that in more detail in the October meeting.
Right, but just, everyone take note of it.
Yes, read the weekly report, folks. Yeah, it was a great year.
Yep.
I did. You were like, so close, girl.
One question for you, Dom. We had paved the Federal Street parcel and it looks like we dug it up after the fact, or we brought dirt in on top of it? What was the?
Well, there's no way we dug it up.
There's a pile of gravel. Be, it's just a pile of gravel, he stockpiled it for a minute.
So we're like, for future removal?
Yeah, that pile will go.
Okay.
If somebody, we'll sell the pile with the parcel, something like.
All right, we're going on to Mayor's Report, number sixteen, quickly, Devin bought your Calcutta ticket for the museum. The museum, Calcutta, is Saturday, September twenty-seventh, and your ticket sales will help the museum with their activities. We talked about it a little bit earlier, frustration around car noises, speeding, um, uh, in and about the city and around. I think the town is facing similar concerns. I know that, uh, the police tend to pull over, I've seen a lot more pull over on Main Street than they have in the past, but... And then the other one is continued issues with e-bikes and e-scooters and not obeying traffic laws, I guess. And I know that's not an easy one to address, but, um, so I think that's all I got for now. Tim?
Uh, not a lot, uh, just to, uh, piggyback on what you were saying, Tim. You know, thinking about that and looking at it, seeing it happen, I think we're gonna have to take a look at the police department and whether or not we need to increase the traffic safety portion of that for next time around. I just think that's, that's gonna be the only resolution to that, because these guys are so busy now that some of these be dedicated to this stuff or else they're not gonna do it. And maybe that we can couple that into the garage enforcement, having some more garage enforcement than what we have now. But having said that, um, I'd like to say I'm very happy with what I've seen so far of Cafe Monet. Uh, that's not in my ward, but every time I go by there, uh, and that place is open, there's a lot of people in there. That's exactly what we envisioned to be across the street and I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with that. I've heard a lot of good things about that place. I haven't gone in to, to order anything yet, but my understanding is they're a week out on reservations, so you gotta get in there, uh, and, and, and make a reservation to be able to go to that place. And that's really saying something, uh, for those folks. I'm really happy. That was what we all envisioned and that, this is something that came to fruition. Uh, and it really looks good for the city. Can I just ask one question? What's, what's up on Industrial Lab down in, not Industrial Lab, Lemont Drive? What's going on there by the river?
That's the stormwater.
They're digging up, that's all, that's a new stormwater project?
That's the gravel.
Okay, okay.
It's probably where the gravel came from.
Yep, okay, that's all.
And I talked to Chip, they found some surprises in there with the concrete that you might have seen.
No.
Large concrete.
Some old, uh, piers that held up an old deck back a long time ago.
Oh, yeah?
Little concrete box that, that'll break apart.
Yeah, I was always wondering if they were gonna find artifacts. Uh, I, I thought there would have been a lot on the core, on the Main Street, Kingman Street dig, but I've really been hearing a lot about it.
Timmy Hawkins on it, right?
Timmy was here.
Yeah.
Quick question, um, if you did traffic control, that's not, we could hire someone, is it a level three? But could a level two do traffic, and only traffic?
That's a chief question, you know, we would, we would hire him as a level two, but, and then try to get him to be a level three, you know, so.
Now, Chief says that oftentimes traffic stops lead to bigger stops or, or like situations.
How's the town gonna treat that when we're in our joint budget? They're gonna say, what, you're, you're increasing the budget for something that's going on in the city, not in the town?
But I, I would argue that the town is having issues also with traffic.
Just a thought.
Yeah, like I said, at the football game, they couldn't use them in the town.
Yeah.
The other day.
It stole my Cafe Monet that I have actually been and it is excellent. I saw Chip there, busy, the service is great, the food was fantastic. Um, there's a window there that you can sit at a table per two and see them cooking, which is really cool. It's like a, you can maybe sit there next time. Chef's table, it was, it was great. And that is an example of one of our development projects that turned out as we wanted it to. Um, the other thing really quickly is, um, the Grace Trail that I've been working on with the support of the city and the rec department is, the grand opening of that is September nineteenth. Lower Trails at Hardak at four P M. It's a walking trail that will have signs along the way to encourage reflection and mindfulness and support, um, people's mental health. So I'm pretty excited about it, so. I'll be sure to invite you all.
The twelfth, Friday the twelfth?
September nineteenth.
Oh, nineteenth.
Nineteenth at four P M. At, in the back, in like the back parking lot, the Lower Trails at Hardak.
At three o'clock, you go?
Ten. I'll pick you up, four o'clock. That's all?
I have three. I'd be remiss if I don't say I've got a reservation for Cafe Monet at seven thirty on Friday.
I hope they're watching this meeting.
Excellent.
Um, I was gonna bring up the excessive noise thing too. I've had a couple complaints about that, including myself, but other people as well. Definitely a discussion item because they're being wild and crazy on Fairfield Street. Two sixty-nine Lake Yard, we talked about that previously. It looks like they've added to their assortment of wonderful yard implements and stuff. I wasn't sure if it was even came from that last time I brought that up. It's the one that's got like the, I don't remember who brought it up, it was just that line. It's the one that has that weird fence thing halfway down and they have fires up front, but it's always low.
Yeah, in the corner of cedar and lights.
Oh, what about them?
Is that your turn, Marie?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's getting more and more chaotic.
Oh, my God. I don't know, he, well, you had a swimming pool in the yard and firewood and...
They're very efficient with their space, I would say that.
They're inviting people in their house now, or in the building, because there's a sign out there that says, come on in, we're open.
It always said no trenches.
So take a look at that.
Open for what?
I don't know.
Before you know it, they'll have a rooster.
Yeah. For to, to view, to view their stuff, to view their stuff they have for sale.
Yeah.
I saw it, yeah, they were on my body.
Maybe it's not health hazard, not really burning as much as...
Are you talking about, uh, over two eighty-eight lake?
I thought it was like one, or two sixty-nine. Or two sixteen had the, the metal bar around it.
Yeah, that's, that's on the corner of Cedar and Lake.
Oh, that's the other side of the street then?
Yeah.
That, that has the piping around it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about though, yeah.
They have a, uh, they have like a tent.
Yeah.
Is it the farm stand?
Yeah.
No, 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 Fox's opposite side of the road.
Across the street, yeah.
The farm stand looks like, it's got a little.
Oh, yeah, well, it's like a camp.
I buy some tomatoes.
It's like a campsite with a swimming pool.
One more for me, kudos to John Montang on the Eagles in the Park.
Oh, yes.
The chainsaw, many comments, many, many people impressed by it. Chad, you up?
All right, uh, I got two. Uh, Chip, are we still staying on to people who did the engineering with Guy at Circle for their recommendations? Is that coming up?
I don't know if it's gonna, yeah, I told them our goal is November Bonbo, but for many other times, but moving forward.
What did you say, Chip? I didn't hear you.
Uh, Guy at Circle?
Yeah, you said what?
Uh, it's big, could be ready for November Bonbo.
Okay. I just have a couple people that are buying that area. Six Guy at Circle.
Um, second is the police, Chip, or Dom, I hope you can relay this, I have two positive police stories. One happened in the town, um, one of the businesses I work at, we had an unruly patron. The gentleman, um, was very big and picking fights, not only at the restaurant, but the store across the street. And it was a pretty, had the potential to be a pretty dangerous situation. And ended up, there were some weapons in the vehicle. Sales PD came down, um, there was five of them, um, and then the officer went, ended up making the arrest, handed him a piece of paper, went to shake his hand, hooked him up, turned it on like more professionally, more smooth, um, so that's a, you know, kudos to their training. The second one's a little bit more personal, um, we got a call a couple days ago that a package was stolen off our porch, um, we didn't even know the package was stolen, um, sergeant, I forget his name right now, I should have written it down, saw something fishy as he drove by my house, pulled in, whipped it around, pulled in, caught the guy, um, besides him trying to wake us up at seven o'clock with a one-year-old the next morning to give the package back. Couldn't ask for much better service than that, we, we got it back before we even knew it was gone, so. If you could pass that along, those are two positive police stories I've had in the last month.
That's great.
We're up one right now in staffing.
Oh, yeah?
So we're up full?
No, we're up one.
Plus one.
A plus one, a one extra.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, Marie, you up?
Okay, um, did we ever get anything back from the chief about, uh, police presence at the New Lake Street apartment building I had messaged you about? Is there any facts to that, or?
Not yet, but I think, um, so I've reviewed the data on whether it has risen to the level of the public nuisance ordinance. Um, we're not there, we're not seeing crimes committed there.
Okay.
We're seeing a, a lot of, um,
Loiter.
Loitering?
Activity, um, and people who are known to be, uh, you know, in some of the illicit trades, but there's nothing, there's nothing yet that's actionable.
Okay, because there are kids in there too, what I'm a little concerned about, some of those things happening.
I hear really conflicting stories out of that property. I hear Hallmark card heartwarming stories about kids and then I hear the, you know, the ones we were just talking about.
Yeah.
So.
Do we know where he is on capacity?
No, no.
I'd be curious to know, like, how full he is.
I was told, uh, actually by Grant, um, about seventy percent.
By that one?
Yeah. Also, is there any, uh, ruling about cars that are just, that the city street is being used as a driveway?
That they never move?
Exactly. We have a car that is parked in the road, he's not really blocking driveways or anything, he's really not doing anything illegal, he's not on the green belt or anything. The car has not moved for two months and it creates quite the bottleneck in that area.
On North Elm, on North Elm.
About where? Can you give, give me a description of some?
In front of twenty-four, it's, uh, well, I was number twenty-three, so twenty-four's across the street.
There's been a lot of chatter about the parking on North Elm.
A lot.
It's always.
There's another place at twenty-nine that has three or four cars parked there, one relatively close to the fire hydrant many times and, um.
So maybe that's a place Garrett.
You've got cars coming up La Salle Street and either turning left or right and if somebody's coming along and going around that, that one car, I've seen close to several head-ons, Brendan probably has seen the same. Um, the same with, um, the cars parked in front of twenty-nine, it's, it's, they come up La Salle and they go to, you know, go around them and there's cars coming.
Why, why isn't that a, no parking here at the corner?
Should be enough parking here at the corner.
It's been.
It should be, but, but then he, he's just using it for his driveway and, and I, I just, I think.
Didn't you have a simi- similar situation on La Salle? The guy was parked.
Yes.
To the same guy that moved around the corner, or?
Um, no, this, this is somebody different.
Yeah, I think.
So Marie, what's the corner now that's a problem corner, what and what?
La Salle and North Elm.
Isn't it across from La Salle, Marie? Like, if you're coming down La Salle toward Elm, you can see that car in front of you, or is it on one of the?
No, they're, they're on each side of the corner.
All right.
You gotta go around them to get into traffic.
Yeah, yeah, and it, it really, uh, for us, what it, what it was doing was, cars would come along, we'd, we'd come, cars would back up and we'd be coming along and we'd try to turn into our driveway and we couldn't. And, and there wasn't enough room for somebody to sweep by through.
I'll look at it and see, you know, one of the challenges, it becomes a pick-your-poison situation.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the winter parking ban begins to clear some of it up.
Yes.
Um, but when we enforce heavy with on-street parking, then the green, the green belts get damaged.
Yeah, I get it.
And so I'll, let me drive out and take a look at it and see, um.
You want to refer that to public safety?
I messaged, um, Lieutenant Weatherby about it. The, the one good thing it's done, it's slowed down traffic.
Well, that's.
Oh, there you go.
It is traffic calm, yeah.
But it is, it is, um, I, I don't know, it's just, it's, to me, it's a nuisance and, um, I just don't think that someone should use the city street as their permanent parking place.
The state unfortunately says that that's now statewide policy, I mean, their land use plan, you know, but.
Really?
Hundred percent.
We don't need designated off-street parking, we can all park on the street.
And I have one more little thing to add, um, October is going to be my last meeting on city council and, uh, because we've moved to Tim's ward.
I think you should run against him.
Go for it.
I'm hoping the competition.
So, um, I won't quite make it the full nine years, but of course.
Wow.
But, um, yeah, but I just want to, uh, thank everybody and I've enjoyed it and working with this council and councils before and it's, um, I've gotten a lot out of it, a lot of me doing that, so.
Well, you'll be our new informant and police advisor on that development down on.
That, that's right, yeah. Oh, we have a big telescope in the living room too.
We, we'll miss you, I'm glad we have you for one more meeting.
Yeah.
So Marie, you're going with the story, you're moving now that we voted you off.
That's right, sounds good, doesn't it?
Sounds better, yeah.
I learned from ethics that you can't do that.
Nine years ago, we said, well, we, we need to build some senior housing. Get this new person up.
Yeah, I guess it takes nine years.
Whatever works, Chip.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Marie, for all of your time, but we'll, we'll see you in October.
Yes, you will.
Lindsey?
Um, yeah, I don't have much that hasn't already been said. Um, one thing that was brought to me was the tra, is that what you were talking about? The traffic circle? What Chad was talking about on Guyette? That's not.
Well, yeah, Guyette Circle is, is a, is a circular.
Okay, no. The traffic circle that we're talking about putting in on Lower Walden and Lemna.
Yeah.
Request to make sure that milk trucks can easily fit around it.
Milk trucks?
Yes.
Yeah, it's designed for, um, traffic trails, they, they end up mounting the little centerpiece.
I think we did talk about that, okay, perfect. And then, yeah, I can echo the traffic thing, I do a lot of running and walking in the town, in the city and I usually don't have to worry about cars from behind me almost hitting me, but I did almost like get hit by a car that was coming up from behind me, so, I don't know, traffic's just been insane this year.
It's like a national trend, honestly.
It's insane, like, there, I was working from home today and my windows look out onto Pearl Street and there was just vehicles like, uh, burning their tires, flying back and forth, it's like, it's not even that long of a straight stretch, like, but, yeah.
Are you running in the roads or on our new sidewalks?
I run on our new sidewalks as much as I can, but sometimes I have to run on the roads.
Confirm that.
I can't sleep if there's not a car driving by my window without a spoiler, I don't know.
All right, anything else, last call?
Motion to approve warrants.
Thank you.
Eight thirty-one twenty-five.
Second.
Second motion, any questions on it? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve minutes?
Motion passes.
Second.
Eight four twenty-five.
Minutes, motion by Tim, second by Trudy, any corrections, amendments, changes? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, anyone oppose? And the minutes are approved. And motion to adjutant?
Yes, please.
Chad and Trudy, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
We are done for the evening.
Thank you.